including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the Clerk to the Commission's office at 404-612-8232.
the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County. It is 10:02 a.m. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall. Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr. Vice Chair Khadijah Abdul-Rahman.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are grateful for this day, for your many blessings upon our lives. We thank you now, Lord, for our life, our health, our strength. Bless now these who are assembled in this meeting. Give now our leaders your strength, your courage, your protection, and your wisdom. We thank you now, Lord, for every good and blessed thing. It is in your name that we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page two, Consent Agenda. 24-0072, adoption of the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the county commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have one item to be removed for separate consideration on page four.
Page four?
Page four. 24-0079, Select Fulton, request approval of an amended and restated Economic Development Services Agreement between Fulton County and the Development Authority of Fulton County. That item has been removed for separate consideration.
All right. Any other items on the consent agenda? Now, there's a motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett. It is seconded by Commissioner Thorn. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Four yays, zero nays.
Next item.
On page five, regular meeting agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have an item requested to be added to today's regular meeting agenda. 24-0102, request approval for the procurement of supplies and equipment required for individuals housed in the county's jail facilities in a total amount not to exceed $2,910,764.79.
All right, Madam CFO, what's the emergency?
Mr. Chairman, this is the procurement package that we are bringing forward for all of the inmate services unit commodity items. We feel that it is time-sensitive so that the Sheriff's Department is not without a method to provide these items to the inmates if necessary.
Okay, this requires a supermajority vote. Five...all right, let's vote on whether or not to. All right, the motion to approve is by Commissioner Thorn, and seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Let's vote, please, for the added to the agenda.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yays, zero nays. 24-0084, adoption of the regular meeting agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have an amendment to move an item down on today's regular meeting agenda on page six. 24-0088, discussion, county manager update. That item has been requested to be at the end of today's agenda.
Last item?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'd like to make a request. I'd like to move the consent agenda item 24-0079, Select Fulton, and 24-0100 to be moved up where the county manager's discussion item was.
Before the county manager's discussion?
Well, on the agenda to move it up to the beginning. We're going to move the county managers to the end and move those two items up.
Commissioner Barrett.
I think the idea was to put the Select Fulton one after their presentation. Are you okay with leaving that one there?
Yeah, we move both up, the 24-0079.
Yeah.
Which is the consent agenda and the Select Fulton, both of them together.
Yeah, I think that was already done. Okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ellis?
So, is this to put them together, or to...
To put them together and move them up to the beginning.
Okay.
To have the discussion and then the consent agenda item.
Okay, I guess, I don't want to use...we've sort of gotten in a pattern of moving things up that I don't really understand at times why we're moving them up. So what is the rationale for...
We have a bench of consultants in the audience that are here in respect for their time to go ahead and do that at the beginning.
Okay, I just want to understand kind of why we were looking to do so. Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else? All right, the motion to adopt as amended, a motion to do so by Commissioner Ellis. It is seconded by Commissioner Thorn. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yays, zero nays. 24-0085, ratification of minutes, regular meeting minutes, January 10th. Recess meeting post-agenda minutes, January 24, 2024.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorn, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yays, zero nays. 24-0086, presentation of proclamations and certificates. Proclamation recognizing dementia awareness day sponsored by Commissioner Ellis.
Okay, just have...just a quick reminder for the public that today begins the new rules regarding proclamations as well as comments from the public. During the public presentations, we're limited now to one proclamation per commissioner. And number two, with respect to public comment, the public comment has been extended from 30 minutes to one hour for public comment, with each speaker being allowed to speak up to two minutes. And that includes current elected officials. In the past, as you recall, there was no time limit on elected officials speaking at public comment, but the board voted to allow, rather to limit, current elected officials to two minutes as well. So those rules are effective as of today.
All right, we're ready? Is this thing on? Can you hear me? All right. Well, as the chairman has just noted, we're put on a quota in terms of proclamations. And I don't do a lot of proclamations, if you notice, but this particular one is very important to me, and I think should be very important to all Fulton County citizens. And I want to thank the folks that are up here with me who have advocated for this and are doing some really critical work within our communities. So, without further ado, I want to share this proclamation and encourage you to listen to some of the facts that are enclosed within the proclamation. Whereas Fulton County is the population hub and business and cultural center of Georgia with a rich heritage of progress, inclusion and service for its citizens, and the Fulton County Commission recognizes that metro Atlanta is the fastest aging of all metro county areas in the nation, with over 190,000 Georgians by 2025 with reported dementia and 384,000 with self-reported cognitive impairments, and a large majority of these individuals residing in Fulton County. And whereas most Georgians wait an average of six years to be diagnosed due to stigma and access to care, and the majority of their care is provided by their families within the community, with over 607 million hours of unpaid care valued at a total cost of $7.6 billion. And whereas Fulton County is desirous of welcoming and supporting its aging population through its senior service department and the efforts of its Commission on Elder Affairs to make the county a dementia-friendly community which is informed, safe, and respectful of individuals living with dementia, their families, and care partners, and provides supportive options that foster optimal quality of life. And whereas the Fulton County Commission seeks to support these efforts, which are in line with its core priorities of public safety, fiscal stability, infrastructure investment, and community vibrancy, and makes a pledge to promote Fulton County as a leader in being a dementia-friendly community as outlined in the Georgia Alzheimer's and Related Dementia State Plan, Guard, adopted by Governor Deal in 2014. And whereas this dementia-friendly community effort is being supported and coordinated as a partnership across all sectors through the implementation of a dementia-friendly subcommittee through the Council of Elder Affairs consisting of local governmental entities, healthcare professionals, public safety officials, service groups, businesses, media, and communications specialists, and residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners will continue to work toward a designation of a dementia-friendly community as promoted by the state plan focused on equity, inclusion, access, and awareness for those living with dementia, and providing a supportive, welcoming, and informed community in which to live, work, and visit, and thus hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 7, 2024, as Dementia Awareness Day in Fulton County, Georgia. You're welcome. Now, who wants to kind of share a little bit about sort of bringing all these efforts together? Beth?
First of all, I want to thank the Commission. I want to thank Commissioner Ellis and Commissioner Pitts, who several years encouraged me, senior services. Today you see members of our grassroots coalition. We've got three main goals. That's to increase awareness of dementia-friendly practices from Main Street to Home Street, so no one has to be encountered in an unpleasant way. We want to reduce stigma, so people don't have to wait six years to wonder, "Do I have it?" And then supportive services of, "What do I do now?" Or so someone can walk in a grocery store, and if they can't figure out why they're there or what their money is, someone can greet them presently. Or people can take their family members to dementia-friendly restaurants. It's going to take all of us, and people are interested. We'll have a website up soon, dementia-friendly-fulton. Look for it in the next couple weeks. Join us. We need all of you to help us take this from Main Street to Home Street. So thank you, and thank the Commission.
Continuing on page five, public hearings, twenty-four, zero, zero, eight, seven, public comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom video conferencing or by submitting their comments in writing by registering on the county website, www.fultoncountyga.gov. Priority for public comment will be given to Fulton County citizens and those individuals representing businesses or organizations located within Fulton County. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed sixty minutes. In the event the sixty-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comment will be suspended and the business portion of the BLC will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the meeting. Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, we have received six speaker cards. Will the, all six speakers, please come forward?
Just six?
Just six.
Okay.
Reverend Lydia Meredith, DeJuan Robinson, Linda, Linda Adams, Maria Guardio, Paul Hershey, and Julie Allen.
So when you, when you have fifteen seconds remaining on your two minutes, I'll say fifteen seconds, and that's your key clue to begin to summarize and conclude your remarks. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Reverend Lydia Meredith, President of the Fulton County DFACS Advisory Board. I am here advocating for leadership and resources to end the hoteling of Fulton County children and youth in the custody of DFACS in the state of Georgia. Hoteling is a prevailing crisis. Even though it has been happening for nearly two decades, it is not a safe place with proper intervention resources for our children and youth or the DFACS staff charged with the oversight of their care. Hoteling has not been on the news recently since the fall of 2023, but our children with behavioral disorders are still suffering. Instead of being brought into a youth wellness center with wraparound social and mental health services for temporary placement until appropriate placement can happen, these children, youth, and staff are being hotelled. Please help us in hoteling for our county, for our children and youth that live here and their families. We need a benefactor who will provide the site for this wellness center. We initially envisioned four-seventy-five-foot Farben Road. Now it is overrun with homeless people and drug users. If we are allowed to use this space or another unused or underutilized space, we would be happy to seek donors for renovations. Please help us and help our children. Thank you for your consideration.
I wish my other two black members was here on the board, because I've been watching what's been going on here for quite a while, Mr. Pitts. And it's a shame that we have a split board over here on Fulton County, which is a diverse board, which is good, but some of the thing that's been going on in Fulton County and in this commission board has not been servicing the people of Atlanta and the people of Fulton County that look just like, you know what I'm saying, the members of this board. And it's been going on for too long, and we have people over here that seem to be above reproach. We all see what's been going on in the tax commissioners' office, and no one wants to speak on it. It's a dang-on shame, and it almost criminal that we have people that we allow. And I want to know who allowed Vesta Holden to have a contract that has not been bitted out, that has been wrongfully putting people out, our senior citizens? Eighty-nine percent of this, Miss, you know what I'm saying, Miss Roman, affect African-Americans. Seventy-eight percent affect senior citizens, Mr. Pitts. Nobody wants to speak to Mr. Ferner that. And Vesta Holden, it's criminal, Miss Thorne. You know what I'm saying, Miss Barrett, you know what I'm saying, Mr. Ellis? What's good for the white community is good for the black community. We need to stop this, because we are at a split. Atlanta and Fulton County have been getting along, but politicians are the ones that have been dividing us. And we are afraid to speak out on some things, and, Mr. Pitts, I know your resume, I'm born and raised here. Our city manager, you know, your county manager, Mr. Anderson, not above reproach. Mr. Ferdinand is not above reproach.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, the same way that we hold our sheriff and deal accountable, hold our county manager accountable, our tax commissioner accountable, and we won't worry about the time speaking, but we need to fix this, Mr. Pitts.
Good morning. I bring you greetings from the New Horizon Center and the Historic Advice City Neighborhood. I have here with me one of the seniors that attend that center. First of all, let me say thanks to the proclamation Mr. Ellis just gave to the group of dementia. I also sit on that Commission of Elders, so thank you so much, sir. I want to, they say y'all always start off by saying thank you. So let me thank each of you who has made a change in the leadership at the New Horizon Center. We want to also thanks for the roof repair that you've done on the center. New Horizon Center can use a makeover. We have a sunroof, what they call, that needs upgrading so the seniors can go out and enjoy the sun and the cool weather. We had a great time in our community garden this past summer, and we was able to do some produce and pass on to all of the seniors. They love getting their hands planting the dirt. There needs to be more programs and activities where the seniors can not only participate, but to want to come back to the center to enjoy themselves. The center is for them to enjoy. We enjoy, I said that part. Several seniors are interested in the senior home repairs. Last October, I believe it was, we had someone from Fulton County to come out to talk about home repairs. There has yet to be any update, so we would like to have the senior home repair program to come back to the center to give us some update. I just want to say thank you all for the support and resources that you all have given the seniors on the west side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Maria Guardio, good morning. I would like to give my most sincere appreciation for y'all's attempt to hold Natalie Hall accountable to make restitution for her crimes against, the financial crimes against the taxpayers of Fulton County. I do have a little bit of a concern. A $200,000 cut to her budget doesn't quite seem to be fair to some of the employees who might end up being harmed when it was not their fault. They might be getting cuts and whatnot. I think that it would be best if Ms. Hall has a $1 maximum for every paycheck from here on end until restitution, complete restitution has been made. And that includes the fees for a lengthy unnecessary trial that should have never had taken place if she had any ethics. Her perpetual intimidation and harassment of Mr. Calvin Brock. In the state of Georgia, one incident would be considered a misdemeanor, but all of her, and I'll look at Sue Joe, all of her crimes added up together, all of her incidences of harassment were felonies. And if those trackers in the cars took Mr. Brock out of state, that means it would be a federal offense. I have not seen any charges against her. Well, maybe that's because we have an inept district attorney. Let's start there. And I was absolutely shocked, like a very high insurance premium, so that she doesn't get charged with felonies that she deserves. Thank you.
My name is Paul Hershey. I'm here to support agenda item twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-nine-four that is recommended by one of the Commissioners and the $200,000 reduction, but I think that I'd like to see that amended to if she runs for commissioner next year, that it comes out of that budget until the money is paid, and no reduction in salaries and the salaries given to her people be approved by the Commissioners. Number two is, we've got two Commissioners that are flying around the world, promoting themselves in violation of the travel arrangements, and I'd like to see the financials on those two people. You've got three Commissioners that are supporting the DA, and when you look at the DA, you have people in the DA's office that, that are supporting the defunding of the police and are supporting the defunding of the training facility in Atlanta, in my opinion. And I think that the Commissioners need to look at the word sedition. You've got twelve-hundred homes that are being, that are being squatted right now by illegals in Fulton County. You, I would like to recommend to the, to the controllers and the, and the, and the general manager of the Fulton County that you take the grant money tracking out of the consent agenda, because you've got three findings in audits that basically say the internal controls.
Fifteen seconds.
Of the grant money is inadequate. And lastly, there's a movement to replace or to remove Mike Russell from the Reparations Task Force, because they don't, he doesn't agree with it, and Coleman is doing that. And the bottom line there is, is if you remove him, then remove.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Julie Allen. Who on this board has contacted legislators or written a resolution to investigate why there has been an average increase in the number of deaths in Georgia over 2019 across seven metro counties, of twenty-seven percent in 2020, fifty percent in 2021, and forty-two percent in 2022 in the population ages fifteen to forty-four? Why is the young working age population dying in record numbers? These are your constituents. In 2020, this board ceased control of the Fulton County Board of Health, who is demanding access to de-identified public health data from the legislature. Who would object to investigating this extraordinary number of excess deaths in our working age population that was subject to mandates to keep their jobs? I have emailed a just-published, peer-reviewed study titled "COVID-19 mRNA Vaccines: Lessons Learned from the Registrational Trials and Global Vaccination Campaign" published in PubMed-listed journal Curious. With 293 references and detailed analysis, Mead and colleagues conclude that vaccines never should have been used in children, and at this point, governments all over the world should stop vaccination in all age groups. The authors demonstrate the vaccination, the vaccines are neither safe nor effective. Please contact the legislature to get answers as to why our young people are dying. Fulton County has a case backlog of more than 20,000. Thirty, thirty-five percent of inmates in Fulton County jail are still unindicted by the DA, and 25 inmates died there in the last two years amid the Trump grand jury. Fannie Willis isn't serving this community, she wasn't even before she became absorbed with her own legal problems. No one believes that now amid new lawsuits, congressional investigations and subpoenas that she will start doing her job. The community deserves a prosecutor.
Fifteen seconds.
Whose first priority is public safety and the rule of law, not helping Joe Biden win in 2024. For the good of this state, she must resign. Likewise, Commissioner Natalie Hall just cost taxpayers $902,487. She must resign. She refuses to resign. Please charge the loss to her district constituents.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, we have nine speakers on Zoom.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first person to speak is Matt Rowenzack.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Matt Rowenzack, Fulton County resident. First of all, I want to say thank you to the four Commissioners that, you know, put forward and confirmed, I still, I think, too expensive of a budget, but at least we held the budget the same, at the same millage rate. And for Commissioner Arrington and Commissioner Hall to try and make the argument that we weren't voting on a millage rate is semantics. We all know what you were trying to do there. It's just another disgusting example of your lack of honesty with the public. If you spend more money that is more than the current millage rate, it's going to lead to a higher millage rate. We're not stupid. Second of all, fully support agenda item twenty-four-dash-year-zero-nine-four. Commissioner Hall, again, is another example of corruption in this county and in this state, and all $902,000 should be paid back through her office, and ideally, her dollars, not the taxpayers of Fulton County. And lastly, if you aren't aware, in the district attorney's office, her chief investigator is Mr. Capers-Green. Guess who his wife is? It's her chief legal assistant, Mrs. Tia Green. So we have nepotism in the DA's office, not to mention she hasn't complied with documentation from this county as of last week. So I would also pursue, if we have a case of nepotism, which we do, in the DA's office, that also needs. It's just example after example after example of corruption in this county, and it needs to be dealt with. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Kevin Muldowney.
Good morning, Commissioners. It looks like Fannie has gotten herself into a whole bunch of hot water.
I'm sorry. Kevin Muldowney.
Sorry.
Oh, you didn't get any of that, huh? All right, I'll go again. Morning, guys. It looks like Fannie has gotten herself into a whole bunch of hot water. Just look at the headlines. Fannie failed to disclose airline ticket paid for by alleged lover. Alleged lover, we learned recently that the Nathan and Fannie love train has been rambling down the track since 2019. Fannie fires whistleblower Amanda Tipson for exposing the DA's illegal use of grant money. Lieutenant, Georgia Lieutenant Governor announces special bipartisan committee to investigate Fannie. House Judiciary Committee subpoenas Fannie. Fannie accuses alleged lover, alleged lover's wife of interfering with Trump prosecution. Fannie Willis's team cries racism. And the most relevant today, Fannie still hasn't responded to Commissioners' request for information relating to the alleged misuse of funds. Her office has been non-responsive despite multiple follow-ups. What the hell's going on? I know you guys write the checks. She is an embarrassment to the board and to the citizens footing the bill. Fannie is doing exactly what Fannie wants, whether it's carrying on an adulterous relationship with an under-qualified stud she has hired, or ignoring a direct request from the sitting Commissioner for a full audit. I think you all agree, this has got to stop. On another lusty matter, I fully support Commissioner Abdur-Rachman's agenda item twenty-four, zero, zero, nine, four, that would claw back a portion of the money the county has been forced to pay for the misdeeds of Commissioner Hall, although I personally think $200,000 out of the $900,000-plus settlement is woefully short. We have, we have some things that need to be straightened out. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
The next person to speak is Lucia Frazier.
Good morning, Commissioners. I also fully support reducing Commissioner Hall's budget. I do agree that the 902K is just, is a lot, and to find a way to, you know, get that off the taxpayers' backs as much as possible. And I do think it's a personal thing that she should have to pay for, because it was a personal issue. To Investigate Fannie." "House Judiciary Committee Subpoenas Fannie." "Fannie Accuses Alleged Lover's Wife Of Interfering With Trump Prosecution." "Fannie Willis's Team Cries Racism." And the most relevant today. Fannie still hasn't responded to Commissioner's request for information relating to the alleged misuse of funds. Her office has been non-responsive despite multiple follow-ups. What the hell's going on? I know you guys write the checks. She is an embarrassment to the board and to the citizens footing the bill. Fannie is doing exactly what Fannie wants, whether it's carrying on an adulterous relationship with an underqualified stud she has hired or ignoring a direct request from the sitting commissioner for a full audit. I think you all agree, this has got to stop. On another lusty matter, I fully support Commissioner Abdur-Rachman's Agenda Item 24-0094 that would claw back a portion of the money the county has been forced to pay for the misdeeds of Commissioner Hall, although I personally think $200,000
Fifteen seconds.
out of the $900,000-plus settlement is woefully short. We have some things that need to be straightened out. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
The next person to speak is Lucia Frazier.
Good morning, Commissioners. I also fully support reducing Commissioner Hall's budget. I do agree that the $902K is just a lot. And to find a way to get that off the taxpayers' backs as much as possible. And I do think it's a personal thing that she should have to pay for because it was a personal issue that we're dealing with, one of her personal issues. Second of all, I also agree that there needs to be some more pressure on the DA's office to comply with the county audit committee's request for information. Thank you very much.
The next person to speak is Ben Howard. Ben Howard.
Greetings, Commissioners and staff, and special greetings, fellow citizens. Ben Howard, Senior Advocate, Public Policy Analyst. To the senior citizens of Fulton County, mark your calendars. The Commission on Elder Affairs meets on the second Thursday of the month at 11:00 a.m. For information about the Commission on Elder Affairs, the Commission on Disability Affairs, or any matter relating to Fulton County senior citizens, call the Fulton County Star Line at 404-613-6000. That Star Line number is 404-613-6000. Condolences to the family, relatives, and friends of Ms. Barbara Cook, the longtime program director at the HJC Bowden Senior Multi-Pregnant Facility in East Pointe. To you advocates who have expressed an interest in keeping an eye on the Housing Authority of Fulton County, you may want to start with the connections between board members of the Housing Authority and the millions of dollars that flow across their table. You might also want to take a look at the rationale Housing Authority board members give for not providing Fulton County commissioners updates on the federal investigation of Housing Authority operations.
Fifteen seconds.
The next person to speak is Jennifer Hill. Jennifer Hill. The next person to speak is Margie McLeod. Margie McLeod. The next person to speak is Nancy
Hello?
Margie McLeod, go ahead.
Yes, I am talking, I'm supporting, that we got to be very careful when we get the governor trying to get a position appointed. If you do that towards Judge Kurt, y'all better be watching out also because he could do the same thing. And we don't need nobody, the governor, to appoint anybody. We need to keep it as it is. We need to let the people vote for this to put her back in office. She doing a wonderful job. But it look like to me, when people do the right thing, they want them out. Our community is supporting Kurt. So you better be watching out, whoever vote for that. He gonna be appointing you also. Have a blessed day.
The next person to speak is Nancy Toro. Nancy Toro. The next person to speak is Sandra Thorne. Sandra Thorne. The next person to speak is Sarah Manley Simmons. Sarah Manley Simmons. With no response, that concludes Zoom public comments. Madam Clerk?
No further speakers.
All right, continue.
Okay, the item moved up on today's regular meeting agenda, bottom of page 10, 24-0100, Select Fulton: Presentation Development Authority of Fulton County Governmental Accounting Standards Board, Gatsby 77.
Sorry, thank you. Good morning, Commissioner Samir Blahi, Director of Select Fulton. Appreciate your time this morning in moving up this item. We'll have two quick presentations. One is our standard Gatsby 77 report from the Development Authority on their year-end annual work, as well as a presentation of follow-up on a new service agreement that we've executed between the county and Development Authority, an important presentation that helps to spell out the roles and relationships that each entity will have. And then we'll take questions at the end and expect our consultants from EY to be here as well. So I'll turn it over to Sarah Elizabeth.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to speak briefly on Gatsby 77. As you know, this is a federal requirement which requires us to provide information about tax incentives. I'll begin and then pass it to our EY team. Just providing a few quick summary items on the impact of the incentive that the Develop Fulton Board approves. Just three brief examples. I have a little bit of a cough, so hopefully my voice will last for us. The Board recently approved an incentive, as you know, for XCorp. This was a $700 million AI investment in technology. And when deciding whether or not to provide this incentive, which was a 10-year reduction in taxes, the Board looked at, of course, securing this AI technology investment for Fulton County and ensuring that our county remains a technology hub and center. But also, the Board worked on specific benefits that XCorp could provide to Fulton County residents. And these specific additional benefits beyond taxes included partnership between XCorp and Fulton County Schools and Atlanta Public Schools, providing AI curriculum to students, an agreement that XCorp will provide internship opportunities for students, partnerships between XCorp and local HBCUs and colleges in Fulton County, and XCorp connecting into the Fulton County entrepreneurial ecosystem through incubators like the Russell Center for Innovation and the Gathering Spot. So we all know AI is here to stay and really is taking over. So it's so important that our Fulton County school students are prepared. So this benefit of that AI curriculum with XCorp would not exist but for the work of the Develop Fulton Board securing that opportunity. Another example, in September 2023, the Develop Fulton Board approved a housing development that would include the statutorily required affordable housing requirement. But the Develop Fulton Board ensured that this developer went beyond that and provided affordability in perpetuity. So again, that benefit of that extended affordability time would not exist but for the work of the Develop Fulton Board. Our late chairman, Marty Turpo, of course, was always focused on how are our decisions impacting Fulton County residents? And so our Board has really tried to continue that spirit and that leadership. One last example. The Develop Fulton Board did not approve an incentive for an industrial development in Union City. And it was interesting, after that was not approved, Mayor Vince Williams came to our board meeting and explained to our Board how not approving that incentive was really harming his community because that industrial building did not receive an incentive. And so therefore, they weren't able to pass through those savings through the triple net lease to secure a tenant. By not securing the tenant, a tenant was not able to bring approximately 300 jobs to the Union City community. So Mayor Williams eloquently explained that. Eventually, our Board did approve an incentive. And shortly thereafter, the developer was able to secure a tenant that then brought jobs to that Union City community. So that's just a brief example of how our Board is focused on transparency and thoughtfulness, not approving every incentive, but being extremely thoughtful and using best practices. I'll now turn it over to EY, and then Samir will conclude for us. And any questions that you all have? Thank you for your support, each of you, and for all that you do for Fulton County. Thank you.
Okay, great. Hi, good morning. My apologies for my voice. I'm Caroline Saleem, a Managing Director at EY's Quantitative Economics and Statistics Practice. And we've been working with the DAFC for the past nine years, doing economic impact analysis around projects that are receiving the incentives. Can we go to the next slide? You've covered this, right? Okay, can we go to the next slide, please? The next slide. Thank you. So one of the things that we do every year is that we prepare a couple different types of reports for the DAFC. So we look at the tax impact of projects. So we estimate what are the taxes foregone due to the incentives. And so we do that as part of compliance with Gatsby 77. But then we also look broader. And we look at sort of what are the economic benefits that these projects bring to their communities? And so we look at sort of holistically, not only the tax impact, but also the jobs impact, the income impact, and other benefits that are brought to the communities. If you go to the next slide, please? So this slide here is summarizing what is the net new property taxes for Fulton County in 2022. So as part of this work, we look at the different property taxes to the different taxing authorities. And so here, we're summarizing what is the impact on the county in 2022 from the projects that received an incentive. So the way to look at this chart is just to think about what are the taxes that the county would have received without the projects occurring, which is the taxes with no investment? And then adding in the taxes that the projects, so where the development occurred on those parcels, the new tax impact from those projects, and then subtracting out incentives provided or taxes foregone to get to a net benefit. So our estimate in 2022 for Fulton County, so only looking at the Fulton County villages, was a net benefit of $15.7 million. Next slide, please. We also look at property taxes for the Fulton County School District. And so here, it's the same type of analysis. So looking at funding for Fulton County schools. The way to think of it is even after the incentives, the benefit to Fulton County from those projects and the property taxes that those projects paid was $12.1 million in 2022. And then if you go to the next slide, we did the same analysis for Atlanta Public Schools. So the Atlanta Public Schools' impact of those projects was a net property tax benefit of $21.1 million. And that's after taking out the $14.7 million in incentives. Next slide. So this slide gives you a little bit more information about the economic impact in a five-year snapshot of these incentive projects. So you can see, starting in 2018, going to 2022, the number of projects that have received incentives has gone from 72 to 134. So those were 134 projects received an incentive in 2022. They committed nearly 44,000 jobs, $10 billion in capital expenditures, and they received $9.7 million in incentives. The net benefit, again, what I showed before, was at $15.7. So you can see the benefit to the community over time. You can see the growth in the number of job commitments, the number, the growth in capital expenditures as well. Next slide. So when we do our economic impact report, so we write a report every year. We look at sort of the economic benefits that these projects bring to the communities. And we look at three types of impacts. So we look at what are the particular businesses on those parcels that are receiving the incentive? That's the direct impact. So you can think of the office building or the distribution center or the hotel that is on the parcel that receives the incentive, and that's the direct impact. And then we look at the secondary impact. So we look at what are the indirect and induced? What are the relationships in the community? What are the other jobs supported in other sectors? And we carefully model that out every year. Next slide. So this just shows a quick overview of what were the projects in 2022, that capital investment of $10 billion. You can see it's split between the different types of projects, so residential, office, warehouse, hotel, a pretty good distribution. And you can see the job commitments as well to the right, that sum to that nearly 44,000. Next slide, please. So this is, this last slide is just a summary of what is that total impact? So when we add those direct, the indirect and induced impacts, what is the total benefit to the community in terms of jobs, in terms of income and economic output? And you can think of economic output as sort of revenue. And so here, I think it's just important to note that the nearly 44,000 jobs that are being supported at those parcels, at those sites that are receiving the incentive, they're supporting another nearly 20,000 jobs in other sectors. So you have a multiplier effect of about 1.5. So for every 10 jobs in an incentive project that are created through incentive projects, there's about another five jobs in other sectors of the economy that are supported. Next slide.
Thank you very much for allowing us to present. And then also, if you all have any questions, we would be happy to answer.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions about the data. So when you talk about active incentive, or sorry, I guess, active projects, that's a cumulative number for projects that are ongoing. This is not numbers that are per year, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, I think, I understand that this is the, I get,
actually, can I just say, it's projects that received an incentive in 2022. So they could have been done prior, if your question is, they're not new projects.
On which slide are you referring to? So if you're talking about the one, the five-year slide? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the 134. Was that your question, just?
Well, so if I'm reading this right, so you're saying there were 72 new projects in 2018, 88 new projects? Is that what you're saying?
They're not new projects. So the way to think about it is, so we looked at what projects received an incentive. And so it's not, every year, there's about 15 to 20 new projects per year. And so it is that cumulative, what projects in that given year got an incentive?
Come closer to the mic.
So every year, the Board, on just an approximate basis, may award between eight to 20 incentives. It just really just depends on the market, on the environment of development. So these are, then incentive period is for 10 years. So when we look at the numbers, we're looking at all the projects that are still within their 10-year incentive period.
So am I correct in saying that this report is what is required by law to provide?
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, I just think from the purpose of educating us every year on your work, it would be helpful to have something that goes beyond what's legally required and actually talks about what happened in 2023, for example, which is not here, as well as a detailed breakdown by year of what actually happened in that year along with these cumulative numbers? Because I think it's really hard to sort of parse out what actually happened in 2022 from what is provided here. So it's hard to sort of make a judgment about how things are going only looking at the cumulative 10-year numbers. And also not sort of seeing when the 10 years ends for each of the projects in the mix. So it's hard to say what that's going to look like in next year, right? How many are going to drop off? Because they're almost, you know, they're at nine years right now. So I, you know, for next year, I would certainly appreciate a more comprehensive report that really talks about what you all are doing. I had a question also about the so-called, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be sarcastic. Let me take that back. I had a question about the, you know, items you discussed that were sort of community-based that are sort of an output of these projects. In particular, the educational one that you spoke about with, was it XCorp?
Yes, XCorp, yes.
So what is the commitment on that front? Because it's great, it sounds like all great stuff. But if it's not a commitment, then is it just a nice-to-have?
That's a great question. So in our meeting, we have Dr. Mike Looney, who is the Superintendent of Fulton County Schools, who's actually on our Board. And then also, Dr. Erica Long, who represents Atlanta Public Schools, who's also a Board member. So it's interesting because in every single meeting, they are fighting for Atlanta Public School students and Fulton County School students. And specifically, Dr. Looney with this XCorp, when we were going back and forth with this company, he made sure that they agreed in a public meeting to honor the commitments that I mentioned. And so now, we are drafting language with our attorneys to make sure that those commitments, like the AI curriculum for Fulton County School students, will be included in the legal documents that they are signing. And we will follow up on that to ensure because I don't want people saying, well, they agreed to this, but they didn't do it. So that's a great question. And we're making sure that those commitments are in the legal documents that our Board approves.
And then will there be follow-up? Like, in other words, will they present reports and things like that to you all during the period?
Yes, and we can, I can talk with you to ensure that what I'm doing makes sense to you and is appropriate for you. But yes, we will. But yes, we will, because we don't want folks to be able to say, well, they agreed to this and they didn't do it. We want to make sure that what they're committing to is actually coming to fruition, because that was a major reason why the board approved this. Making sure that AI technology was a curriculum for our school students. So that's a great question about their follow-up.
Thank you. I have one other question, and I know you didn't really talk about this year, but as I'm sure you're aware, there's been a lot of questions and controversy around the data center projects. So could you speak to sort of why you are approving those kind of projects? I mean, the constituents in my district are, you know, up in arms about, in particular, the X Twitter, whatever Elon Musk thing. So, you know, I think we, at the minimum, owe them an explanation.
Yeah. Well, for that particular one, that was an AI investment that was either going to go to another state or to Georgia. So the board looked at the increase in taxes, that's kind of the most basic level, on Fulton County securing that 700 million investment, but then also those extra benefits that, but for this project, like AI curriculum for our students, would not happen, or partnerships with HBCUs and local Fulton County schools. And then there's some data center projects, there's just one in particular, where the land was only zoned and only could be an industrial building or a data center type, because that was what the zoning that the City of Atlanta had approved, so that was it. So we worked with the community to determine, you will get an industrial building in this, in this location, because that's what it's zoned for. And so the community said, well, we want to make sure it's not a type of industrial building where trucks are coming in and out. And so in that instance, a data center was approved by the board, because it was better for the community in not having trucks, like an Amazon delivery location, coming in and out of the neighborhood. So it really is a case-by-case basis, but that's one example where all that could go there was a data center type of develop, excuse me, type of development. And then on the X Corp, it really was the increase in taxes, securing that AI technology for our community, and then also providing benefits to students and entrepreneurs.
I mean, listen, I'm all for benefits to students, but I, I mean, I don't know where that sort of fits in, fits in the mix of what you all work on when you're looking at community benefit. I mean, I think the things we typically hear about are along the lines of jobs and affordable housing in particular, and certainly consideration for students and education is a piece of this. But I think there's also some concern about the longevity of the corporation. And so, you know, we're making this agreement, we're allowing this to happen, are we going to see our tax benefit at the end of an incentive period if the company is no longer existing? Or are we just giving away tax dollars? I'm just, I have a lot of concerns about this, and I... Okay, whatever. So, so I, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I think in the future too, it would behoove us to be really, really clear before there's all these rumors swirling about what community benefits are coming from this, that you have indeed studied the longevity of the company. I guess I didn't really give you an opportunity to answer the question about the company's health, financial health going forward. Have you taken that into consideration?
You know, that was a question of the board members, and I think they came to the realization that although all of them did not specifically support Elon Musk as an individual, they did think that as a billionaire, he would be able to fund this company and ensure its longevity. And in fact, they determined that after this $700 million AI investment, that would even increase. Because typically, after you make your first investment in a data center, you are then improving and adding to that technology. So they definitely considered that question and evaluated and thought that he definitely would be able to sustain the X Corporation for this investment.
Okay. I appreciate the extra information on that front. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Arrington.
Good morning. Thank you for the report. I guess I also have questions about the community benefits, and I would love to just be kept abreast of the agreement, to make sure that those are identified and when they're, when the community will actually benefit from them. And then my other thing was, we need to update this contract. Still, this Marty Turpo is the chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weiss, here, I'm Drew Rockman.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, let me start by saying thank you for the great work that you all do. I know that sometimes it can get a little bit touch and go, for the lack of a better word, but what I like about it is that you all are accountable. You all will give information, Dr. Looney, Dr. Long, I've talked with them several times. Whenever I get questions, whenever I send stuff to Samir, Sarah, interview all, you all are very responsive. And so I just want to go on record saying thank you for that, because everybody does not have that type relationship with their development authority.
Thank you.
And so the fact that Fulton County has one that's open, transparent, we may not always agree sometimes, but we can agree that you all will give the information. We just got to ask for it, first of all, let me say that. Secondly, secondly, I liked the vision of our deceased chairman, Marty Turpo, and part of the vision he had was to make sure there was equity coming up on the South Side. I would still like to see that vision. You know, I understand individuals having conversations around Elon Musk and the other things, but at the end of the day, are we going to have trucks coming in and polluting the area, or are we going to have a data center? And so sometimes we have to make decisions based on what's best for what we have. By far, I am not a supporter of Elon Musk, but I, if his money comes to town and it benefits the communities I serve, I put a check mark there. And so what I'm saying to you all, I know with that particular situation, it became more political. And I'm here to tell you, I looked into it, I investigated it, and it was a good deal at the end of the day. You're never going to do anything, none of us, as commissioners, you all, as a development authority, you're never going to do anything that everybody supports and likes. That's in relationships, that's in business. So what I say to you today, if we can continue on the right track, make sure the transparency continues to stay there, because I would be remiss if I didn't say, I remember coming into office and, and you all was just on the news every day. You were in the paper every day. Marty, under his leadership, he did make some changes. And may his soul rest in peace, I see the benefit of those changes. And I'm going to say a word of thank you for those changes. But moving forward, I would ask that you all continue to do what you're doing, transparency, making sure that the, the board members are open to have the conversations and give the information like they always have. And so thank you, and I appreciate it, and please keep up the good work, and let's keep that South Side vision still alive, okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Thorne. He did. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we could just advance the slides to the Select Fulton piece. Again, we'll close this out, this is, these are two pieces. This is the GASB presentation, as well as the approval of an updated service agreement between Select Fulton, the Economic Development Arm of the County, and the Development Authority. So just quickly walk through this presentation. Next slide, please. Just give you a quick history, and again, Commissioner Arrington, we'll update the agreement to reflect the updated chairman. Apologize for that. I've been here for the last six years, really was brought on board from the City of Alpharetta and sold on a dream of building Select Fulton, a new economic development initiative out of Fulton County. So I'm pleased to be here today, really to present that next iteration of our relationship with the Development Authority of Fulton County. We were formed in 2016 under the county manager. He brought great corporate discipline of thinking through, how do we bring these two economic development entities under one umbrella so that they function in concert instead of an isolation? In 2018, we expanded on those services, so not just providing economic development services, but adding on workforce development, really to empower that organization, less as a social services activity, but more as an economic and business services function. Companies always tell us incentives are great, a talented and skilled workforce is more important to us. And so adding that component, not only the legacy of returning historical grant funds and relieving those issues, but again, really elevating it, and Brett Lacy, who manages that for us, is a leader in the state and the Southeast for workforce development programming. In 2021, we were formed, birthed out of the county manager's office into our own Department of Economic Development, again, having WorkSource Fulton and our Workforce Development Division under us. And now moving into, I guess, the tail end of last year, where the Development Authority approved this updated service agreement that's in front of you, again, with the ultimate goal of really clarifying what our roles and relationships are. I think I've been to this body several times, mentioning, we still get invoices that say, Development Authority Fulton County, Select Fulton, because people don't know the difference and distinction between the two groups. So I'm hoping to clarify that today, and that's what this agreement intends to do. Next slide, please. I'll try to get it with hand gestures. Think about Select Fulton as your economic and community development arm, your real job center arm. The Development Authority Fulton County, or rebranded as Develop Fulton, really works as our commercial lending, our commercial incentive arm. So really getting those buildings out of the ground. And then we, as Select Fulton, work to plug in job centers, as well as making those job centers successful from a workforce development standpoint. That's somewhat of the end-to-end service stream that we offer. So again, the Development Authority is helping to prime the pump on commercial development. We're working with state and regional entities and ecosystems to plug jobs and companies into those facilities, and then making sure those companies are successful with the right talent base. Next slide, please. So again, breaking down what those community and economic development functions look like for us as Select Fulton, I put these in the four big buckets around business services, marketing, I mentioned workforce training, as well as regional coordination. Next slide, please. So on the business services, it's a very core and elementary economic development efforts, business retention, business expansion. Again, we don't do anything in isolation, we do it in partnership with our 15 cities, our state agency, the Department of Economic Development, our many chambers, like the Metro Chamber of Commerce, the South and North Chambers of Commerce, our many CID, so many partners layered on together to provide somewhat of a seamless service for economic development and attraction and investment here in the community. So that's working everything from competitive state projects, doing targeted industry events for some of our focus industries, like film and TV, logistics, healthcare, fintech, doing unique things like small business assistance programs, either through Access to Capital for Entrepreneurs, our local CDFI, rolling off a small business grant through the SBA and the South Fulton Chamber of Commerce to provide technical assistance to our companies. So again, from kind of large company to small company, we're trying to help them with the location here in Fulton County and making them successful once they actually locate here. Next slide, please. Other thing we do is being the big cheerleaders for Fulton County. Sox are world famous, globally known, but many things that we do on the marketing fronts, whether it's ad in trade publications like Site Selection Magazine, storytelling campaigns here locally for some of our redevelopment projects, like Renew the District and Georgia Trend. Again, outbound engagements and industry trade shows like Bio in Boston, or Money 2020 in Las Vegas, again, with our partners at the Metro Chamber and the State Department of Economic Development. Selling not only Fulton County, but metro Atlanta. A third of all jobs, 40% of all wages in the metro Atlanta region are generated here in Fulton County. So if we can get them focused on the metro region, there's a good chance that they'll locate here. Next slide, please. Again, a big component of what we do is the workforce development and workforce training side of things. And again, thanks to Brett Lacy and his leadership, and really bringing that model to fruition. Again, we do some of the more traditional adult dislocated and youth workforce training that's funded through our federal WEOWA grant. We get no general fund dollars towards workforce development. So we are somewhat limited by the prescriptive nature of the federal grant. But again, we don't do anything in isolation, we do it in a partnership with the five local workforce boards. I like to think of the ARC, as well as Careerrise, and our leadership team is the three kings of workforce development in the metro Atlanta region. Again, a lot of creative things that we're doing now around upskilling individuals. During COVID and the pandemic, we did rapid credentialing with Goodwill of North Georgia, one of our, one of their featured programs in their 2023 annual report. So a lot of different things occurring, but again, I think the important piece is maintaining that leadership role for workforce training in the metro Atlanta region. Next slide. And then lastly, talking about regional coordination, again, in partnership with our 15 cities. So whether it's being involved with the Eritropolis Alliance and their broker reception that we just held two weeks ago, partnering with the North Fulton Chamber, things like strategic leadership visits and the like to do outbound engagement. But again, working with our regional partners in order to carry out different economic development functions, whether it's marketing, focus around ecosystems, development summits, or outbound engagements with other communities, work to take the lead on that. Next slide, please. So, so the distinction, again, a lot of, that's a lot of the work that Select Fulton on the economic development, community and business side of things that we do. Shifting over to the Development Authority of Fulton County and Develop Fulton, kind of their focus again is around that commercial development, priming the pump to get real estate out of the ground, as well as being the tool and the toolkit around bond financing, and there's different ways that that takes base. Next slide, please. So again, on the bonds, on the commercial development side of things, they are the tool in the toolkit when it comes for both commercial development and economic development projects with their Bonds for Title program. They do annual reporting through the GASB 77 program, not only to this board, but in our CAFR. They're an important tool in helping us recruit state economic development projects. Again, a lot of these state discretionary funds called REBA grants have to flow through development authorities, and that's something that this authority takes on pretty regularly at a significant cost to them. And again, they continue to monitor and speak and be a leader for development authorities, given that one of the most active authorities here in the state of Georgia. And again, every community is in the same boat, development authorities are only tool in the toolkit for economic development. Next slide. Again, to speak just briefly on the bond financing side of things, again, great help with, whether it's nonprofit refinancing of debt for hospital systems and the like, they provide a vehicle for that. Partnerships with Georgia Tech and the foundation there to help provide bond financing for some of their capital projects, additional things like TEFRA that they're responsible for, and then again, some local and national promotion of the DSE Bond Financing Program, which is very complimentary to the work that we're doing at Select Fulton. So next slide there. So in someone in closing, and the benefits of this agreement, one internally for staff, it just allows us to do better for planning, once we have a clearer sense of, I hate to use the word lanes, but lanes that we better suit, again, based on the organizations that we represent. Additionally, when it comes to funding and funding requests, having that clarity of vision as to what we're taking on, so that we can be strategic in the way we go and secure dollars for both organizations is important. Again, an important piece of this, it doesn't limit, this doesn't prescribe us to fit within those lanes, it's really helping to guide both bodies at this time as to what the different respective organizations are responsible for. So it's not as if this authority, which has got involved with state economic development projects, can't do that outside of Select Fulton. We don't want to limit that, again, just providing a basis for more clarity around direction. And then again, importantly, I think helps to support some of those brand identities. You don't really read into it, but right, Select Fulton means your location, you're identifying a space versus Develop Fulton, that's kind of building out of the ground. So we use, again, Invest Atlanta, Decide to Cab, we all have these names, but helped kind of pinpoint as to what each respective organization is doing. So helping with our brand identities. Sorry. Next slide, please. And again, it's important to remember that this is not about how we go our separate ways, this is how we continue to partner in a more strategic and fruitful way. So next slide. Again, continue to work on state economic development projects. If you speak to anyone in the governor's team, or Pat Wilson at the Department of Economic Development, they will speak to the strength and the benefit that the state and the region gather from all the relationship that both Select Fulton Development Authority have when it comes to supporting state economic development projects. Similar with you. Commissioner, we're very passionate about South Fulton, and I like to say unlocking the potential of South Fulton. But again, doing it in a way that aspires for greatness and not just for development today, and that's something that we've heard very loud from the communities in South Fulton. Again, continue to try to expand the development toolbox, trying to leverage some of the things we do on workforce development with some of the things that the Development Authority does. So if we're financing projects for data centers and X, are there opportunities for some of the people that we're training through the construction-ready program to get first right refusal for job opportunities? So I think there's a lot more opportunity for cross-pollination of the two respective organizations. And then again, I think kind of maybe the best piece is this end-to-end service delivery model. It's great to have a good collaborative relationship with the development It's great to have a good collaborative relationship with the Development Authority and Sarah Elizabeth. It can be very frustrating for companies and prospects and consultants to have to make six, seven, eight phone calls, because this is my workforce person, this is my, you know, local industries person, this is my incentives person, there's multiple groups you have to work with. We're somewhat of a seamless end-to-end service delivery model. And so that's what this agreement provides for, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Thanks for the presentation. And, you know, I obviously am a supporter of a lot of the work that is done through both organizations, to be fair, as it relates to the community and some of these workforce programs and all of this. I do just have some high-level questions, I think, about understanding the structure of all this, since we're talking about this service agreement. So, to be clear, your budget comes from the general fund, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's how much?
We're approximately $900,000.
Okay. And it does seem like there is a lot of overlap with not only what I would assume the Develop Fulton should be doing, but also with some of our other departments. If it's promoting Fulton County, as an example, that's something External Affairs also does, right? So I think there does seem to be a lot of, like, some of what you're doing is community development, and so I'm just sort of unclear on how the decisions get made. And also, just for clarity, before you answer that, Samir, the Development Authority is fee-based, correct? Y'all are self-supporting and fee-based. And so how much marketing and promoting of the area comes out of that bucket? Because it feels to me like that's part of what that bucket of fees should be for, to further development versus the general fund.
Sure. I guess I would speak to kind of what you spoke about, about Jessica's role in communications team. I think maybe the way to nuance it is that team, I think, does a very good job in promoting to citizens. We try to present a very business and commercial-friendly viewpoint, hence the Select Fulton and somewhat of a separate identity, a separate microsite and the like, just because, again, that what we're communicating is slightly different than I would imagine her office would be positioned for. I definitely agree with you on the kind of community development side of things, and there's been cross-collaborations. So our Digital Ambassadors Program has been in concert with Jessica and her team, and leveraging internal tools like the library system and senior centers, so not going and creating things different than kind of already exists structurally inside of the organization, but actually leveraging those opportunities. And then definitely agree with your point about, you guys both placed ads, now you're both doing sponsorship. That was the historical legacy, because again, I don't think there was clarity between both organizations as to who would take the lead for what. And some of that has been already fixed, I think, with Sarah Elizabeth coming into a leadership position at the Development Authority and reconstituting her new board, which very much sees, again, Select Fulton, when that old board was there, was not, it was me, essentially. It was a very non-existent organization. I'm hopeful we put in six good years of work to demonstrate that we're reliable, have capacity and professionalism, and so I think there's some of that trust now to offload those opportunities for us as a county, to take the lead on chamber sponsorships and being the face for that, or taking the lead on industry sponsorships and not duplicating efforts, or not duplicating ads and the like. So I think some of that work's already occurred, and that's part of what this agreement is working towards, is bifurcating, not duplicating efforts.
Yeah, I think, just to finalize the, or, you know, to make clear, I think my concern a little bit is that we're taking expense on it from the general fund that, you know, I think you do a great job. I was saying to my chief of staff the other day that I see you everywhere, and you're always representing the county wonderfully and all of that, so I have no complaints on that front at all. But that, you know, from an expense perspective, that some of that marketing expense and promoting expense should be coming from, and maybe there is, and maybe it's only a small amount coming from you all, and maybe this is something you all can share with me offline, but I do have concerns. We have, you know, a tight budget, we've got a lot of things we've got to pay for, and if that is something that should be coming out of the Development Authority's budget, I, you know, I would like to see that happen where possible. So I don't know if you can speak to that, or if either one of you want to speak to that, but...
I mean, I would never hate taking money out of the Development Authority budget. I don't know, Sarah may have different opinions on that, if you want to speak to it.
Sarah, do you want to speak to that?
You know, I recognize our staff. We have a very, very small staff, Marva, Doris, Daniella, just four of us on Develop Fulton staff. And again, because our board is so thoughtful with not just automatically approving incentives, it also means that our ability to operate is based on those fees. And so it's extremely small, especially as our board is continuing to be very thoughtful. So I can talk further about numbers and information, but it's a very, very small staff, and we're kind of doing what we can, balancing a strong organization, that staff has been working hard for many years, but also a board being very, very thoughtful on what incentives they do and don't approve.
Okay, I appreciate that. Maybe we can all sit down and talk offline. I do appreciate the information. Thank you all.
Commissioner Arrington.
I just want to make sure, again, thankful for everything that you all are doing. Certainly, as we continue to think about South Fulton, no more warehouses in South Fulton. No more warehouses in South Fulton. No more warehouses in South Fulton. Thank you.
Commissioner Thorne.
I just want to thank you for all the work both groups have done, and you're so accessible. Sarah Elizabeth, you've willing to sit down with me for a long period of time and explain what you're doing, the ins and outs of projects. As well as Samir, you are everywhere. You're at the State of the Cities, you're at the Council for Quality Growth, you are out there representing Fulton County very well in the business world. And your budget, $900,000, is so small, considering we spend $1 million in voter education and outreach, and it's such a valuable tool that we need, especially with the development of the airport in South Fulton. Do you have a travel budget, Samir?
We do. I'd probably estimate less than $15,000, maybe on travel. Again, that's outside of what we would pay for a sponsorship to attend the trade show. We may pay $2,500 to $5,000 to be a sponsor. The return on investment there is really great, because Douglas and Henry County pay the same rate, but as I mentioned, we're kind of the tip of the spear for jobs and commercial real estate, so they may pay the same freight, but if they're coming to the region, we're more likely to get them. So I feel like we stretch our dollars a little bit more than other communities.
I do. I do believe you guys stretch your dollars very well, and I'm appreciative of that, of how you are responsible with the taxpayer funds, and I just want to applaud and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thanks.
Thank you. County Manager, did you have...
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, because I think one thing that, and they did a great job of presenting this, but you almost have to get in the DeLorean and go back in time. If you went back in time 10 years ago, there was no clarity on who was doing economic development for Fulton County, and it's not a communications, community development function in any of these organizations. They, anybody that's doing it well has an economic development leader, so I'd start with that. We didn't have one. The Development Authority was clearly opaque, and that would be benign way of saying it. We did not know what was going on. There was no cost-benefit analysis, nobody understood the strategy, and there were some other problems that we're all now unfortunately familiar with. The Workforce Development Grant Administration was probably the worst of the three. In other words, wasn't being done effectively. We were giving money back, there was some possibility of not getting future grant money, so there could not have been almost a perfect storm of poor management. I'll say it that way, as one of my AT&amp;T supervisors told me one time. So what I want you to fully appreciate, and the public as well, is this has been a 10-year journey. I think Samir did a great job of laying it out, but having lived through it, I can just say that having these two leaders in place has made an enormous difference. I mean, they're both stars in their own right. We're very lucky, quite frankly, to have them. Of course, one's 40 under 40. I've told him that when he gets 60, it's going to be a whole different story. But of course, Sarah Elizabeth's on the Board of Trustees of the college and university system. I mean, these are tremendous leaders that have made a huge difference already, and what I want you to know is a couple of things. One is, we, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Samir, we finished in the top 20 of counties for economic development in the United States. Now, there's a lot that goes into that. It's not just this activity here, but certainly this activity contributes to that. Secondly, this E and Y presentation, I also want to give a tip of the hat to them. Yes, it's required by law, but this whole approach was developed out of whole cloth. We had nothing. There was no insight into the benefits accruing from these projects, and I do agree that, you know, getting a little bit of focus on the recency of current projects would be an improvement, but really, to have any financial understanding, it is a lookback, because it doesn't happen, the benefits don't accrue until they're well down the path. So that's why that was developed, and I think it's a very comprehensive and pressure-tested, because we've had many people look at it, some people copy it, but when it was developed, again, a number of years ago, it was, again, best-in-class for being able to look at and defend what we were doing in terms of tax incentives. So that all being said, the last piece is the one that I said was in the worst shape, and that's this workforce development. It is, and again, I think I can say without much pushback, that it's one of the best-managed in the state of Georgia, and certainly better than local governments in close proximity to ours. They do a tremendous job, and as Samir pointed out, that's one of the things that people, when they're looking at new locations, often ask about, certainly Atlanta has a world-class reputation for workforce and workforce development, but this effort is extremely, extremely important. And then, again, finally, I think it's, you know, Commissioner Arrington, to your point, I think Chairman Turpo did a terrific job of shifting the focus, some of that legacy, you know, definitely need to get a little bit more targeted, and I think Sarah Elizabeth has done, again, a terrific job at leading and bringing things to the board, hence why there is angst about a warehouse project, for exactly what you said. So they've done a much better job, I think, of having a rich portfolio. So I feel like I'm doing a commercial for economic development, but it really is so important, and done generally with few people, few resources, but very, very, very talented leaders. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just wanted to follow up. Mr. County Manager, thank you for that history. Obviously, I wasn't here for most of that. I do appreciate it, and I just want to be clear, while I ask a lot of questions, I do have a lot of appreciation for both of your leadership and the work that y'all are doing, and I look forward to more communication and more great work from both of you for the years to come. So I just want to make it clear, if I was hard on y'all, it was nothing personal, because I think y'all are great.
You'll see me everywhere, you know?
All right, love it. Thank you.
In parting, I just want to say, the notes at the county manager had, I sent those to him, those were really my words. But seriously, though, you all are world-class, and I'm not trying to say that just to say it, it is because I've had to interact with both of you all since day one, both organizations, and the concerns that I had, whether you could help or not, you would steer me in the direction of where I needed to go, or the constituent needed to go. And everybody does not have that luxury. And so I sing the praises again of the county manager. I do understand Commissioner Barrett and her concerns, and I know that you all will address and give her the information that she needs, but great job. I want to continue to see great and good things coming from both organizations. Thank you.
Samir, did they need to approve this agreement? Is it an action item?
They do, yeah.
Vice Chair, so I think this requires approval.
It's the next agenda item.
Thank you.
Do you want to sound it?
Yes, back on page four on the consent agenda, Select Fulton, 240079, request approval of an amended and restated Economic Development Services Agreement between Fulton County and the Development Authority of Fulton County.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you.
One second, the amendment is the name, correct? Changing the name? That's the only amendment, correct? Commissioner Arrington, I just wanted to make sure that was sounded out. The name needs to be changed. Thank you.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, 5 a's, 0 nays.
Thank you.
Back on page six. 240055, Information Technology, request approval to award a contract without competition in an amount not to exceed $267,235 to provide license and professional services required to upgrade the existing agenda management system.
Commissioner Barrett.
I had asked to hold this last week, or sorry, last meeting, because this relates to some of the things we talked about around our administration of board's authorities, task forces, et cetera, and the plan was going, was in the interim weeks, was to try to get a meeting together with the clerk's office, as well as with IT, to sort of understand better if this was going to meet those needs. There's a particular module that is a part of this that may or may not work for that. So I'd asked for it to be held, but because of, we had meetings scheduled, but because of the issues we've been having on the technology front, those meetings had to get postponed. So I'd like to make a motion to hold this again, if that's okay with everyone. So substitute motion to hold.
Is this time-sensitive? Can anyone speak to that?
No, ma'am, this isn't time-sensitive.
Thank you. I'll support it.
Substitute motion to hold.
Substitute motion.
All right, substitute motion to hold by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Arrington, is that correct? All right, let's vote on the motion, substitute motion to hold.
And the vote is open on the motion to hold. And the motion passes, 6 a's, 0 nays. 240089, request approval of a recommended proposal in an amount not to exceed $724,581.72 to provide maintenance, supply, support services for all multifunction devices county-wide.
Right, I have a motion to approve by Vice Chair Abdo Rockman. It is seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Any questions or comments? Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, 4 a's, 0 nays. 240060, Real Estate and Asset Management.
Excuse me?
Five with Commissioner Thorne. 240060, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of a statewide contract in an amount not to exceed $611,020 to deliver, to purchase and deliver 16 law enforcement administrative vehicles.
Right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Arrington, Commissioner Thorne, Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner Barrett.
Is anybody here to speak on this?
Yes, ma'am. Joe has details from the questions that were asked the last time, not sure about the district attorney's office, but he could speak to it.
Okay. Because I was just wondering, it's to my understanding, when I met with her, she was asking for $5 million budget, Fonny Willis, when I had a meeting with her, that she wanted $5 million, but then during the conversation, she said she only really needed a $4 million enhancement, because she already purchased cars. So did she purchase cars last year for her investigators?
So at the February 1st board meeting of 2023, we had two separate agenda items that resulted in the purchase of 20 net new vehicles for the district attorney's office.
Does she still need them? Because I know in her budget enhancement request, she wanted to add more investigative positions. I totally understand getting cars in the safety of her investigators needing cars. As she told us, they were breaking down and they were not in the best neighborhoods. They can't use their personal cars when they're out, so it'd be great if somebody was here that... So it'd be great if somebody was here that could tell us why she still needs additional cars.
No one's here.
Nobody's here. I'll put a motion to hold.
Substitute motion to hold. All right, substitute motion to hold by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Vice Chair Thorne, seconded by Vice Chair Abdur-Raqman. All right, Commissioner Ellis, you want to be heard on the substitute motion to hold?
I'm fine voting on the motion to hold.
Commissioner Barrett? All right, Commissioner Abdur-Raqman? Nope. All right, let's dispose of the motion, substitute motion to hold. Madam Clerk?
And the vote is open on the motion to hold. And the motion passes, five yeas, one nay. 240090, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of recommended proposals in the total amount not to exceed $150,000 to provide standby professional services for environmental engineering and testing services.
Right, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays. On page seven, 240091, request approval to renew an existing contract in an amount not to exceed $5,383,820 to provide comprehensive operation, preventative, and corrective maintenance services for the Fulton County Jail and Jail South Annex.
All right, favorable motion by Vice Chair Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Mr. Ellis?
Just for the record, how long has this particular organization held this contract?
They've been the vendor since October of 2005. Since that time, there have been three rebids, and they have been the selected vendor each time.
Okay. And this is a renewal on a two- or three-year cycle? This is a third or the fourth option, is correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve. Let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Under Arts and Libraries, 240092, request approval to increase the spending authority in the amount not to exceed $263,888.96 to replace damaged books at the Cleveland Avenue Branch Library.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner, Vice Chair Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays. Commissioners' Action Items, 240064, request approval, resolution by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, directing an external review of the actions and procedures of the Board of Ethics over the past five years and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
All right, is there a motion, Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you. We just had a session with ACCG. We have a duty and a responsibility to make sure that our boards are following our rules. And if we do not do anything to ensure that they follow the rules, then we are just as guilty and culpable as they are. Please take some action to make sure that these people do not continue to violate the ethics code, the Georgia Constitution, the United States Constitution, the Georgia Open Meetings Act, and the Georgia Open Records Act. To stand here and do nothing in the face of them continuing to violate every rule and law known to man is criminal.
All right, is there a motion? A motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington, is there a second? Is there a second? All right, fails for lack of a second. Next item.
240065, request approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2 of the Fulton County Code of Ordinances to create a new code section 2-80.1, requiring the appointment of an interim ethics hearing officer where there exists a conflict of interest between Board of Ethics and any party filing a complaint or any party accused of violating the Code of Ethics and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
All right, is there a motion, Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, yes. I'm absolutely moving. See, we got people making requests for ethics stuff against different people. Until y'all do something about this ethics board, nothing that they do is going to be valid. They are the scum of the earth. They refuse to follow their own rules and regulations. And y'all want them to evaluate somebody else? I'm going to talk about them like dogs every day until y'all replace them. They are the scum of the earth. Not only do they violate all the rules and the laws, but they are incompetent. And how are they going to hear something against anybody else, against any other elected official? You want them to hear ethics complaint against the DA? They can't because they refuse to follow the laws. They can't because they're incompetent and they are the scum of the earth. Please take action to remove these people so that we can have quality, competent people who will follow the rules, laws, and regulations, not only of this board, but of the state of Georgia and the United States Constitution. These people must go. And anything that they attempt to do is going to be tainted because they are tainted and because y'all refuse to take action to remove the taint. It's to call the fruit of the poisonous tree. Anything that they do is already poisoned. They have no credibility, and they are completely incompetent, and they must go.
Commissioner Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Arrington, I believe you've been given a lot of latitude in terms of the discussion of this particular item, and I appreciate the perspective of where you're coming from and some of the stuff that you your opinions about some of the stuff you've spoken with. But nonetheless, asking us to take action relative to an organization that would have an active matter before them involving one of us is an inherent conflict. And I'm going to move for motion to file.
All right, there was a motion, no second. Now, proper motion on the floor is to file by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Vice Chair Abdur-Raqman. Any questions, discussion? To file, let's vote.
And the vote is open on the motion to file. And the motion passes, five yeas, one nay.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
Bottom of page seven, 240093, Commissioner Hall has requested to hold this item. On page eight, 240094, request approval for resolution to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget, to amend the Fulton County Code of Laws related to budgetary controls over expenses of commissioners and for other purposes, sponsored by Vice Chair Abdur-Raqman.
All right, there's a motion to approve by Vice Chair Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Arrington, Commissioner Barrett, Vice Chair Abdur-Raqman, Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Arrington, you have the floor.
Thank you. I do not believe that this action item really addresses the issue nor solves the problem. This item intends to take one set of tax dollars to replace another set of tax dollars. So it doesn't really get to where I think it's trying to go, which is saying, hey, look, we're going to blame Commissioner Hall and hold her responsible for this verdict. The money doesn't come from her. It's tax dollars replacing tax dollars. So you're still using tax dollars to pay the judgment. Additionally, it attempts to take training money away. Arguably, she and her office might need more training than anyone else. So I don't know that I could say take training dollars away from the people that might need it the most. Why would we take training dollars away from the people that might actually need it the most? Thirdly, it also hurts the people of the district. She doesn't get that money. You're not, we're not trying to take away her salary. This money hurts the people in her district and her staff that had nothing to do with this. Additionally, I think it's very disingenuous to for this board to censure her prior to the court issuing its ruling, which may have actually been the reason or part of the reason for the result that came back. And so I think it's disingenuous because we got involved in the middle of a court proceeding, took an action which likely had an outcome, an impact on the outcome of that case. And then now we want to say, okay, we'll blame her or blame them. We just paid out $4 or $5 million for a man that died in jail from bedbug incident, suffocating off of bedbugs. We didn't take money from the Sheriff's Department. We settle cases all day, every day because of actions, inactions, and wrongdoing by people that serve in county functions. But we don't go back and attempt to punish them. So I think this is the wrong thing to do. I think it sets a bad precedent. You know, this would mean that any four commissioners could take away the budget of the other three commissioners. We could have four Republicans say, oh, we don't want the Democrats to have any budget. We're going to take their budget away. We could have four Democrats say, hey, we don't want the Republicans to have any budget. We're going to take their budget away. This is bad precedence. There are a lot of unintended consequences. And every other time that this rule has been changed, it has been changed to affect all commissioners and not to single out any specific commissioner. Further, I have questions about the legality of this removing and targeting specific elected officials. This is just the wrong thing to do. We already kicked her while she was down. She was down and we kicked her. And we said, we're going to censure you. And now you're asking us to spit in her face. I refuse to spit in her face. I refuse to kick her while she's down. I refuse to have these unintended consequences that will be the result of this action. This is punitive. This is because somebody doesn't like somebody and they attempted to attack them and fight them while we were in executive session. This is wrong. This is wrong. This is wrong. This is wrong. And I'm going to be on the opposite side of the world from it.
Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions and then I do have some thoughts as well that I want to share. But on the question front, Madam Vice Chair, can you speak to where the $200,000 number came from?
The $200,000, actually, if you look at, if you go in, it's the last page. Okay, if you go to page four, it breaks down where it takes the salary and benefits from $534,847 to $480,846.70. That's a reduction amount of $54,038. Travel conference, $50,000 to $5,000. That's a reduction of $45,000. Professional services, $6,623, down to 1,000. That's a reduction of $5,623. Hospitality expense, $2,459 to $459. That's a $2,000 expense. And contingency, $93,339, that was taken to zero. So the total reduction is 200,000, and the areas of the reduction are areas that would not affect the constituents. The amount that it would be reduced by, we actually have data of last year, whereas commissioners were able to operate successfully their offices between that $4,000, $5,000, $600,000 range. And so I hope that I answered your question for you, Commissioner Barrett.
Well, yes, I mean, I was looking at the list of numbers. I wasn't really concerned about the breakdown, Madam Vice Chair, but rather how the $200,000 relates to the judgment of $900,000 and change.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Barrett, I meant to tell you, when I went through this, I went through this meticulously. This would not affect her employees. So her employees would, what the employees make, whether she would have to lay them off or anything like that, it does not affect them.
Well, I'm confused by that because if you're taking $54,000 away from her salary and benefits budget, how does that not affect them?
Because she still has enough money to operate her budget. We have the data to show that last year, the same amount of money was spent, and operationally, she can still do it. She would have to make the decision as to what and how she would spend her money. And so it would not require her to let any of her staff go unless that was her desire to do so. The impact, the financial impact and the areas that were impacted does not put a financial strain on her to keep from operating her office, nor does it put her in a position that she has to let go any of her staff.
Okay, well, I just need some clarity then. So Madam CFO, can you just confirm, Sharon? Sorry, okay. Can you just confirm that she has, is, has she have, are all of her staff positions filled? I guess is the first question. I don't know if that's. has she have, are all of her staff positions filled? I guess is the first question. I don't know if that's a Mr. Herman question, but...
Point of order, Mr. Chair, that's not a relevant question for our Chief Financial Officer.
Okay, well, is it a HR question? I'm just trying to understand if she has...
What's the question?
How is it not relevant?
It's not a relevant question.
I'm just trying to find out if she...
It's not a relevant question to be directed to our Chief Financial Officer.
I have the floor.
What's the question?
The question is whether or not she has all of her staff positions filled out. I'm trying to understand the impact of this resolution. Does she have all of her staff positions filled, completed? Are they?
Go ahead.
Well, I, we...
I'm, I'm being told by the, um, Budget Manager that her positions are all filled. Of course, I have no way of accessing to confirm directly.
So I'm just confused. If they're all filled and we're reducing her budget in the Salary Department, it seems to me that somebody's going to either have to take a pay cut or be let go. So I'm confused about how this would not impact her staff.
All right, that's an open question.
Yeah, so maybe I'm, I'm, I need an answer on that, you know? Um, here's what I want to say. I don't know if anybody, I don't know, Mr. Herman, I don't know if you have any way to get an answer on that right now or if we just have to wait and hold this to get an answer, but my, my sense is that whether or not that's the case, and it does seem to me that it's the case, um, that most of what Commissioner Arrington shared is accurate. This is, um, a bad precedent in terms of how the, um, Board is allocated resources to serve our districts. And so while I understand the desire to respond to taxpayers who are frustrated that this, you know, 900,000 and change is coming um, out of their pockets essentially, um, A, this doesn't solve that problem, as Commissioner Arrington stated. It's still taxpayer money, whether it comes from the Risk Management Fund or from her budget. Um, B, it sets this precedent, um, in, by changing Fulton County Code Section 101-38 and adding this subsection, which seems to imply that each commissioner can be treated um, differently in terms of how much budget or the rules around their budget than any other commissioner. And to Commissioner Arrington's point, that would mean, and I'll just reiterate it, that any four of us could get together and take the entire budget away from another one of our colleagues. And while I appreciate, Madam Vice Chair, your attempt to make sure that Commissioner Hall would be able to still um, operate and still have staff and all of that, it does seem fairly arbitrary, the amount at which, I mean, there's nothing in this that would not set a precedent that any amount could be taken from a commissioner, and that, I think, is problematic. Um, I have, I have a lot of concerns about that. And I also, again, want to, I think, very much point out the fact that our budgets are not given to us to, for our fun and entertainment. They're not for our personal use. They are to serve our districts. And taking money away from the citizens of District Four because the person at the helm has this judgment against her, I think, is unfair to those citizens. I think it is unfair to her staff should somebody have to, um, either take a pay cut or lose their job. And I don't think it gets at the, at the problem, which is, is this taxpayer money or not? So, you know, all in all, I appreciate the sentiment and I appreciate that there's a desire to, you know, have Commissioner Hall pay for this directly, but we don't have a mechanism, from my understanding and talking to the county attorney, we don't have a mechanism to take it from her pay. Um, and taking it from her pay would be the only real way to take it from her directly. So, you know, for me, this doesn't get at either the, um, you know, the actual intent of saving the taxpayers' money and it doesn't, um, and it goes too far in being punitive. Um, and ultimately, that punishment is being delivered to the citizens of District Four, so I, I can't support this.
That's it. All right, uh, Vice Chair, Abdu Rockman?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I will go to my earlier comments that I make every time I sit in this chair. We are stewards of taxpayers' dollars at the end of the day. We're not down here for whether somebody likes or dislikes. We're not down here to go to somebody's party or to be on somebody's plane. We are down here as stewards of taxpayers' dollars. Let me be crystal clear about this. I take no joy or no special uh, excitement in this legislation. By far, this is probably not popular with quite a few people. However, let me just say a few things. Whereas because of Commissioner Hall's conduct in her capacity as a commissioner, as determined by the Administrative Law Judge in Calvin Brock versus Fulton County, Fulton County is liable for judgment in the amount of $902,486, uh, $486.84, which will be paid with taxpayers' funds collected from all of Fulton County districts. Let me go to a further part where it says, whereas the BLC finds that a change to the FY 2024 budget is needed due to Commissioner Hall's actions leading to the substantial judgment in the amount of 902. I can continue to go on, but I will not go on because it only serves as a, uh, talking point for individuals to be able to say they want the taxpaying citizens to pay for the actions of a sitting commissioner. I have looked over this. I have listened to constituents. And I have did the very due diligence and investigation of what, as the taxpaying citizens of Fulton County deserve over a preference of party, over a preference of being elected, and over a preference of not wanting to seem to be punitive because at the end of the day, the lack of judgment is punitive to your district. The lack of judgment is punitive to the taxpaying citizens of Fulton County. And so I would say to my colleagues that this is fair. It allows Commissioner Hall to operate, to have her employees, but also take accountability for her actions as opposed to moving that accountability to the taxpaying citizens of Fulton County, who, by the way, should have our first allegiance to. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and I want to thank the Vice Chair for bringing this forward. And I do think that this strikes the right balance. Uh, just so, you know, kind of the public understands sort of the, the numbers here, okay? Um, Commissioners Hall, Hall's individual 2024 budget is 705,000 without this reduction. 705,764.21 cents. This would remove that, move it down to 505.764.20, 21 cents. In 2023, uh, Chairman Pitts' office ran his office. He's the chairman of the county, okay? So recognizes that he has a different set of responsibilities than the rest of we do, us two. 415,000 dollars, forty, 415,040.84 cents. Um, Commissioner Thorne ran her office, 449,534.85 cents. Commissioner Barrett ran her office at 428,593.19 cents. So the notion that this is somehow punitive to Commissioner Hall that falls on deaf ears. Because we've had three commissioners who were able to run their office at substantively less than 505 last year. So certainly, it's well within the range for this commissioner to be able to operate. If we want to talk about precedent, the bad precedent, what's unprecedented, is what has happened that caused us to have this conversation in the first place and to have wasted so much time, energy and resources, not just this 900,000, but the embarrassment to this board, the time and, time and energy associated with it, our staff had to engage with in, in the defense of the matter. And we've got before us a federal judge, independent arbiter, heard all the facts. We've got a commissioner that violated civil laws. And the judge has inferred also that she very likely may have committed a felony in the process. That's unprecedented. And I see no circumstances in which it's a bad precedent of this board to make at least some modest attempt to drive some level of accountability. And as I've noted, you can clearly not say that this is punitive. She still remains with a budgetary number which three other commissioners ran their offices at less for the prior year. If we were reducing this to zero, if we were somehow seeking to claw back her compensation, et cetera, potentially that could be viewed as punitive. But this is within the realm of reasonableness. And I don't think anybody can dispute that. It may involve that she may need to make some decisions. Well, tough. You got, you got yourself here. We didn't get you here. Okay? Um, and this notion that somehow when we leveled a censure that had some sort of impact on the case, that's a bunch of bogus junk, junk as well. The censure had to do with the fact that we had a person employed who was in a relationship with their chief of staff. That was solely what the censure was about. Censure was about because it violated our policies. It didn't even get into the, the aspects that were alleged in the complaint. And she admitted, so the censure was due to her admission of that, which was a violation of our policy. So that somehow that that played into the judge's decision, it's a bunch of nonsense. I mean, I'm not gonna say a federal judge. I mean, he, he sits here, he's heard all the facts. He wrote a very sound opinion. But we didn't feel like there was any basis for appeal for. To say this is somehow comparable to another matter where we might have settled a case, well, there's no finding of fact. This is, we got, so we got a finding of fact by a federal judge that she violated civil laws and an inference that she committed a felony. This goes well beyond, I think, anything, and I've been here, this is my 10th year. This goes well beyond anything that has come before us that involv- has involved an elected, elected official in their behavior. And it's been, and there's been a third-party arbiter of it. Due process was given. And it came all at the expense of Fulton County taxpayers. And to some idea that it might, this reduction of this might harm or hinder the individual residents of that commissioned district, well, by gosh, this action harmed the members of my district by costing us 900 grand. You know, I mean, so I, again, I mean, this is, to me, this is about the least we could do to show some level of signal to the Fulton County residents that we are going to be serious about holding ourselves accountable. So I'll close on that, and I thank the Vice Chair for bringing it forward.
Commissioner Thorne?
I want to thank you, Vice Chair Abdu Rockman, for the work that you've put in, in trying to rectify a situation. Um, as a new board member, uh, that going through and having to censor one of my fellow, um, commissioners was not an easy thing to do. But I felt like it was a necessary thing to do. When we decide to serve, we're not serving ourselves. We're serving the people of Fulton County. And we should be held to a higher standard. And the actions of her office, of her, um, improprieties brought dishonor to this board, brought dishonor to Fulton County. I have people coming to me from out of state asking what's going on in Fulton County. Once again, we're in the news and not for good things. So for me, yes, it's not going to fully address the issue. It's not going to fully solve the problem. It's moving tax dollars from her budget back in to tax dollars that can be spent in other ways. Um, back to the, to the general budget that can be spent on the entire county. She's been in office long enough. I took all the training. I took every training I possibly could as a new commissioner, and yet my budget was way below hers. My travel budget was way below hers. She spent 50,000 of the 50,000. Actually, she spent 50,300 of the 50,000 in her travel budget. So I think she's attended things. She's had a number of years to get training in. Her staff has had years to get training in. I, I don't think bringing down her budget is a horrible thing to do. We talk about, it's $900,000 and change. We just had Select Fulton come up here. And we had a commissioner question. $900,000 budget? Is that too much for you? Yet we're throwing $900,000 to Calvin Brock because of her improprieties. Yes, I do understand that this may be a bad precedent to set, taking away from, from someone's budget. So maybe Commissioner Barrett, maybe we could get together under what terms that this could be allowed, or maybe someone would like to work on a follow-up resolution. But for me, there has to be a consequence for actions. And I've been shocked and appalled since I first learned about this as a new commissioner. There have been no consequences except that we censored her. The thing that I struggle with, there's been no remorse from her office. If I'm not perfect, I'm gonna make mistakes. And I hope that you're gonna hold me accountable if I make those mistakes. And if I make a mistake and I cost the taxpayers money, you bet I'm gonna apologize. I will issue a formal apology. I've seen none of that, unfortunately. I can have a little sympathy if for some reason I thought that maybe she was a little bit apologetic for what she's brought us through on this board and everyone in Fulton County. But I see no remorse. I see no repentance. So I feel like us as a board need to have some kind of consequence for her actions. It can't simply just go away. And that is why I support this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Arrington?
There but for the grace of God go I. There but for the grace of God go I. The way to solve budget issues is to limit the budgets of all commissioners. We have budgets. We have a travel budget of 50,000, which can be used for other things. But when it comes to salaries, Madam CFO, is there, is there a limit on the salary budget for commissioners' offices?
The way the current, um, resolution is structured, I believe the language allows for the commissioner to establish salaries, uh, in concert with the Department of Finance. So, um, the limit would be attached to the salary range for the positions that you are interested in, um, in using. But other than that, there's no limitation.
Who, who sets the limits for commissioner staffs?
I believe most of those positions are considered personal staff, um, which we try to align to some degree.
which we try to align to some degree with salary ranges, with on-plan positions, if you will, but essentially it's the commissioner, the elected official.
Commissioner, Madam CFO, I have to respectfully disagree on that. Each commissioner, unfortunately, can pay his or her staff any amount that he or she chooses to pay. There is no cap. I agree. I don't know, I think that's what she said, but, so I'm trying to understand, Madam CFO and Mr. Budget Manager. If the commissioner sets the salaries for their staff, and if there is an amount in her budget, how could this not impact her staff and require her to have to fire someone or let them go, right? She set the budget for her staff for the year, y'all put that amount in her budget, now someone wants to reduce that, how would that not have an impact on her current staff?
Commissioner Arrington, I'm not certain if she began the year with all of her positions filled, if there's any, you know, flexibility in there. I'm also not certain on the benefit side if there's any flexibility with the amount that was funded for benefits versus what an individual may have selected. But with all of the positions filled, it is, it is likely that she would have to realign from what's left within her budget to be able to cover, to ensure that she covers the salaries for, you know, for all of, all of her staff. I have not, I apologize, Commissioner, but I have not been able to look at the details around this to really say
So when you say she would have to align, you mean she would have to either fire someone or reduce their salary?
If that's the measure that would be necessary to stay within the remaining budget, yes, if she could not find the resources from one of her other operating buckets, you know, operating buckets.
Well, wait a minute. All of them, the money from all the other operating buckets is being taken away too, isn't it? Yes, go ahead and say it. I heard you.
The majority.
Some of it, yeah.
Yes, the majority of it.
Excuse me?
Some of the funding lines will be reduced to get to the amount that is in the resolution.
Some of them, all of them are being reduced, aren't they?
No, we have several funding lines here, and there are some that are restricted that we have to use for, I mean, they are restricted for other things, you know, within that budget, so, but, you know, that's why I'm saying that some of the funding lines will be reduced to get to the $200,000. However, because it is specific in terms of that resolution, how much is supposed to come from salaries? And if all the positions are filled, which is, you know, what we have right now, is, I mean, it's going to be, we have to find a way to get to that amount. I'm not sure how easy it's going to be. I don't know.
Let me ask another question. Is an employee entitled to their salary, Mr. Herman? Can we reduce your salary? Would you accept your salary being reduced?
If I would accept?
Yes, sir.
No, sir.
Are employees entitled to their salaries?
Employees are entitled to the salaries that we offered them as part of the employment agreement, you know, once they put in their prerequisite number of hours to gain the compensation on a bi-weekly basis.
Madam County Attorney, if she's offered these people salaries at a certain level, and now the money is taken away, which will not provide for those people to have salaries, how is that resolved?
Just addressing the legal portion of it and not the logistics of adjusting your budget, I would say that unless there is a contractual obligation or some statutory reason why a salary has to remain at a certain level, these are at-will employees, and their salaries or positions can be adjusted at any time. And there is case law that has upheld that an officer of the county, even a constitutional officer, whose budget is more protected than an average official, may have to incidentally reduce staffing based upon reductions in their budget if that is what the county commissioners choose to do with the budget.
We headed back to court, y'all. We're going to spend some more taxpayer money. She not going to let them people go, and they not going to have, and the budget's 54,000 short. So then what we're going to do? We're going to spend some more taxpayer money. There but for the grace of God go I. There but for the grace of God go all of us. This is wrong. They're trying to spit in her face. We have an election coming up. There's an election in three months. The voters get to decide. The voters get to decide whether they want to put her out of office, whether they want to reduce her salary, whether they want to reduce her budget. The voters will decide in May. There's an election in May. The voters will decide. And they want to kick her while she's down and spit in her face. I guess we could pee on her too, while she down on the ground.
Just a minute, just a minute. Just a minute. Arrington has the floor. All right. Commissioner Barrett, and let's be clear, commissioners, this is not about Commissioner Hall's staff. Period. Commissioner Barrett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hear what you're saying, but I, I mean, I respectfully disagree. It is, it is going to impact her staff in a number of ways. Either, again, somebody will have to take a pay cut or be laid off, or, you know, they will not have the resources to do the job that they were hired to do. You know, I try my best not to characterize what other people are saying, and, but I'm sorry, I just have to right now because this is, this whole thing is political theater as far as I'm concerned. I mean, Commissioner, or sorry, yeah, Commissioner Ellis is saying, you know, this is an embarrassment to the county. We don't want to be embarrassed, and, you know, and yet, we brought this back up again for the umpteenth time to further embarrass the county. So that's nonsense. If you cared about not embarrassing the county, you would have let the judges rule and, you know, stand and abide by the judges' recommendations of what the county should do in response to this, which was pay a judgment and post information about this, both on our website and on internet and on the public website. That is what the judge recommended the county do in response to this. The judge did not recommend that we short her departmental budget. Arguably, since he's telling us that we can put postings up here and there and everywhere, he could have told us to short her departmental budget. He did not. Secondly, you know, I'm hearing people say this is not punitive, this is not about punishing her, and yet, all due respect, Commissioner Thorne, you specifically said there needs to be a consequence for Commissioner Hall that is punishing her. And also that you were leaning this way or convinced to support this in part because of her lack of a public apology, which is, you know, punitive. You are punishing her behavior because she wasn't apologetic enough for you. So to say this is not about her, about, you know, or about punishing her is just not true. Lastly, I want to say, to list out what we all spent on our budgets last year, I appreciate seeing the difference, and the differences are both in what some of us used our travel and training budgets for, but also for salaries. And I just want to point out for the record that the reason my budget was lower significantly than Commissioner Hall's is because I only have one person on staff. And the reason I only have one person on staff is because I have had trouble hiring more people. So, you know, if I was able to hire more people, there is a good chance my budget would be significantly higher. Commissioner Hall has been here a lot longer, she has had staff, she has a funnel for more people to come in. So I don't think making those comparisons are really fair. I wouldn't want to compromise any of my existing budget, even though all of my current positions are not filled. So I just want to, that's just neither here nor there, I just wanted to state it for the record. But, I mean, I still believe this is a very dangerous precedent in terms of what it will allow commissioners to do going forward in terms of cutting each other's departmental budgets. And I think if you look at any other elected body where there are folks who are elected to do the same job for a district of the same size, take the US Congress, take the State House, whatever it may be, they have the same salary, they have the same departmental budget to equally serve their citizens. And I think messing with that at this level is a mistake. Whether it's legal or not, whether we have the right to do it or not, or we can do it or not, isn't really the point. I think it's a really bad idea, and I think it's just going to be a slippery slope potentially to, you know, a lot worse.
Commissioner Ellis?
Call the question.
All right, question has been called. Let's vote on the call of the question.
The vote is open. I'll call the question. And the motion passes. Four yeas, one nay.
The motion on the floor is to approve, motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Ratman, seconded by Vice Chair Abdur-Ratman, seconded by Commissioner Ellis.
The vote is open. And the motion fails. Three yeas, two nays.
All right, motion fails. I'd like to explain why I didn't vote. The question was called. Again, I'll state that this is not about Commissioner Hall's staff. Companies lay off employees every day when their financial situations change. So let's stay focused on what this legislation is intended to do. I 100% support the intent of the legislation and plan to vote for the legislation. But there are some unanswered questions. First and foremost, I think the way it's presently written is too broad. I think that it should be limited to the Board of Commissioners, and there's a couple of places where I think the legislation, I read it four times last night and once again this morning, should be amended so that the example that was brought up by Commissioner Arrington could not happen. There would be a specific reason for the implementation of what's intended by the legislation that's before us here today. I would secondly like to know in a lot of what's contained in a couple of the wherethes here in the legislation, specifically in whereas number 10, we already have the authority to do much of what's contained in the wherethes, but in number 10 in particular. And then in the first resolve clause on page three of the legislation, if we move forward, this is where I think it should be amended to address solely and exclusively the conduct or misconduct of a member of the Board of Commissioners. And it would only refer to reducing the budgets of a member of this commission who has been judged to have, to be liable for certain actions, particularly involving moral turpitude. I further like to know, Madam County Attorney, I mean, what if any are the financial penalties, if any, for sexual harassment and sexual discrimination and liability charges? And have we levied any in the past? I think I've been here, well, I don't think, I know, I've been here longer than all of you. And this is unusual, extraordinary, never happened before here. I don't recall it even happening in my time at the city council. And I'd like to know how cases, and I can think of four or five, and Mr. Herman, you'll have to help. And I don't want to call names publicly, but people who have been accused, what was the disposition of those cases and were penalties levied? That would be important for me, but primary thing here is I need answers to these questions, and it needs to be tailored specifically to the board because it's too broad as currently drawn. Next item. In fact, now, one other thing, we have a hard stop at 1 o'clock for executive session. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Continuing on page eight, the next commissioner's full board appointments. The next three items are for Board of Trustees of the Fulton County Employees Retirement System, 240095. Chairman Pitts nominated Vice Chair Abdur-Ratman for a full board reappointment to a term ending December 31st, 2024.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays. On page nine, 240096, Chairman Pitts has nominated Commissioner Barrett for a full board reappointment to a term ending December 31st, 2024.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, is her second. Seconded by Vice Chair Abdur-Ratman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays. And 240097, Chairman Pitts has nominated Commissioner Ellis for a full board reappointment to a term ending December 31st, 2024.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Vice Chair Abdur-Ratman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays. On page 10, 240098, Administrative Committee of the Fulton County Defined Contribution Plan. Chairman Pitts has nominated Vice Chair Abdur-Ratman for a full board reappointment to a term ending December 31st, 2024.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Vice Chair Abdur-Ratman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays. County Managers' Presentation and Discussion Items, 240099, External Affairs. Presentation of the 2024 State Legislative Session Update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jessica Corbett, Director of External Affairs. I'm just going to ask the team to please pull up the slides. We are well into the legislative session now and wanted to give you an update about some of the bills we are tracking. Ms. Campbell is here and will help us if I get too deep on any of the, in case you have any questions. Next slide, please. Again, just to recap, as we always include, of our legislative priorities for the 2024 session. Next slide, please. Just a couple of quick recaps. Sadly, the House Rules Chair Representative Richard Smith passed away last week. And the session was closed on Monday in observance of his funeral. The amended FY24 budget was adopted yesterday. Now that has gone to the Senate. State of Judiciary is happening today. The, we're expecting the House Appropriations Subcommittee to begin reviewing the fiscal FY25 budget, excuse me, next week, which is really one of our, we'll talk more about that in just a moment. And crossover day is still February 29th, and Sine Die on March 28th. Last week, we had a good, next slide, please. We had a good discussion with our delegation last Thursday. I would say about half of our delegation members were there. I just wanted to share that Representative Cannon is continuing to serve as the Chair of our House delegation, and Representative, excuse me, Senator Halpern on our Senate delegation is continuing as Chair. They are working to set their schedule of meetings throughout the session. They are working to set their schedule of meetings throughout the session and will be sharing that with you once we have it. Next slide, please. Our Behavioral Health Crisis Center funding, we are about $1.8 million short in the budget that was released by the Governor's Office. We are working with leadership to reintroduce that funding in the FY '25 budget during the House Appropriations Meetings that are scheduled for next week. We're working with leadership on ensuring that funding also stays once the budget crosses over to the Senate. So we will continue to keep you posted and will particularly let you know when the House Appropriations Subcommittee considering behavioral health budget will be happening next week. Next slide, please. The conversation about replacement jail funding continues. We know this board has some important decisions to make. And we'll, again, this is a complex piece of legislation and one that we're just really hearing perspectives and gathering information. We'll be sharing that with you throughout the session. Next slide, please. Wanted to highlight Senate Bill 349, which is cosponsored. This is a bipartisan piece of legislation that ACCG has worked very hard to bring forward. This bill has, makes a number of changes in property tax code and really addresses one of our priorities for the last several years about the gap between sales prices of properties and their assessed values. It makes some other changes as well, including really establishing a floating homestead exemption across the board. We pointed out that Fulton County has had a similar homestead exemption for nearly 20 years. So this would be revenue neutral for us. It makes some other operational changes that are beneficial for counties. And, you know, again, ACCG has worked very hard on this. It is in committee this afternoon, and so we'll hear some of the feedback from legislators. Again, it does have bipartisan support as it stands. There is another piece of legislation. The ACCG has taken a position opposing Senate Bill 364 that has some less desirable, again, across the board for counties. If there are any questions, we could take those. I don't know that I would be able to answer a lot of detail here, but would certainly be glad to hear if there are any questions on this. And I can come back to this after we go through a few more slides. Next slide, please. Wanted to share that House Bill 643 was considered to allow Legislative Council to make some updates, and it will be heard again. This is very, again, it's a relatively technical piece of legislation that deals specifically with retirement plans for Fulton County State Court judges. We have also been working with some legislators on the discussion about judicial officers in Superior Court. Next slide, please. Wanted to let you all know that House Bill 30 passed and has been signed into law by the Governor. And this bill is one that addresses really hate crime and hate crimes and anti-Semitism. And it was one that we've had a lot of discussion about last year. Next slide, please. Again, I won't go over these in a whole lot of detail, but House Bill 1115, looking at sales taxes in the lost and hosts, and also House Bill 862, looking at hosts, which we do not have a host here in Fulton County, but that is something that has been discussed in counties across the state. Next slide, please. I won't go into these unless there are any specific questions, but just wanted to make it known that there are a number of bills looking at taxation, property tax issues, and appraisals. Next slide, please. A lot of, one I'll call out here on this list is Senate Bill 361, which allows for participation in local government meetings via teleconference. This is a change in the Open Meetings Act, which currently does not really support that. Also wanted to call out Senate Bill 390. We've heard from, a lot from our library department with concerns about this. It is related to funding for the American Library Association. And specifically, the concern raised by library staff is about the credentialing of librarians. They believe that that is an important part of their professional development and part of their professional credentials. And they're concerned that this bill would diminish those professional credentials. Next slide, please. Sports betting. Mr. Chairman, I know you've always had an interest in this subject. So we've, there's a lot of conversation in legislation looking at this issue. And I'll just move on. Next slide. A number of different bills discussing election issues. We're just continuing to track these and don't have any specific comments on these. Next slide, please. Again, more election bills. We are continuing to track these and will continue to watch them as we get closer to crossover day. Next slide. Courts and public safety, a number of different rules here. We have heard from some of our partner organizations, including the Metro Chamber, who are supportive of this First Offender Act as a path forward to employment for former individuals who've had a first offense on their record. Next slide, please. There is a lot of conversation right now about Senate Bill 63, which is related to the issue of cash bond and also other issues about release of individuals. This bill could have impact on jail population here in Fulton County and across the state. I won't get into the legislation about district attorneys, but I'm sure you all have seen those conversations. Next slide, please. Again, we're monitoring issues around opioids. And so House Bill 1035 is one that has been reported out of House Public Health Committee related to access of naloxone and Narcan. Next slide, please. Just a quick recap of the legislative calendar. Mental health parity day is tomorrow. ACCG's legislative breakfast will be happening on March 7th. And again, we will have one more meeting of this board before crossover day. If there are any questions, we'll be glad to take those. And I see Ms. Calhoun has joined us as well.
Okay, Commissioner Barrett?
Yes. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the work all of you are doing to try to get some of our agenda passed at the state level. I just wanted to ask very quickly, and really partly for the public as well, just about the, sorry, the two bills that you mentioned regarding commercial property tax, or just property tax, sorry. On the first one, you talked about the 3% floating that would, if passed, would be, that all taxing bodies would have to have the 3% floating homestead exemption, correct?
Yes.
And so, to be clear, we already have that in Fulton County. However, for those parts of the county that are served by APS, so Fulton County Schools also already does the 3%, correct?
That is correct. Fulton Schools in most of our, most of the cities in North Fulton and some cities in South Fulton as well. Fulton County had the first of those, and those have been mirrored by some of the other jurisdictions in recent years.
Okay.
You're correct, APS does not have a floating homestead.
Right. The reason I wanted to point that out, Jessica, was more, it was not really a question for you as much as to sort of let taxpayers know that if this passes, for the folks that live within Atlanta city limits, that would be a significant reduction in what they're paying to APS. So I think, you know, that I think would be a real relief for a lot of the folks that are in that situation. I don't know what the impact would be to APS in terms of their ability to continue to operate in the same way. And that's a question for the school board, I guess. But, you know, from a strictly tax perspective, I think it's certainly positive for taxpayers, not necessarily for everybody.
And thank you, Commissioner Barrett. I will see if APS has put any analysis out. The way floating homesteads work, and I know you know this, is that they start with a base here. So it's really to protect and insulate the property owner from very significant year-over-year increases, which we see in many parts of Atlanta that have gone through gentrification, redevelopment, infill development, all of those things that can have a significant impact on those legacy property owners. And so I think that is, and this is happening across the state. So I think that is one of the benefits that our taxpayers have enjoyed from the floating homestead.
Sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. Can you go back to slide seven?
I will ask the friendly voice in the sky who's running the slide.
The voice in the sky, can you go back to slide seven, please? Just real quick. There it is, yeah. So on SB 349, well, first of all, let me ask you this. On SB 364, is that getting any legs? Is there?
I would, ladies, can you, so it seems, I think there's so much support for 349, and it is bipartisan, that that seems to be the stronger piece of legislation right now. But I do think there's, we just need to continue to monitor.
Okay, thanks. I just was curious about that one. And then also on 349, is there any provision in there for how properties that are sort of, you know, we have this gap, as you mentioned, between sort of the sales price and the appraised value in a lot of cases for the larger commercial properties? Is there any sort of provision in the bill about how properties that are, for lack of a better term, already out of whack would be handled?
I don't know that that specific issue is addressed. I think that the previous reviews of this issue have really narrowed down on the appeals process as kind of a root of that. And I think that this bill is really trying to resolve some of the structural problems in the appeals process that lead to those inequities. So I don't know that it would fix properties that, as you say today, are considered out of whack. But it could prevent that potentially moving forward. One of the issues is about, is about sort of the freeze on commercial properties in particular. And so that freeze was really intended originally as a benefit for homeowners. And I think that, that's really, I think, how we think of this bill as something that is designed to protect the individual homeowner and ensure their tax burden is equitable compared to, you know, the owners of very large, expensive properties.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Thorne?
Hey, Commissioner.
Hi. You pointed out a bill with the Library, American Library Association.
Yes. This is one that, let me see if I can find the page real quick. I didn't, as you know, we're having some printing challenges, so I didn't print this off today. Let me just see if I can pull it up real quick. Or find the page. But I'll tell you, Commissioner, just a little bit about it. There are, it is on slide 12, please.
It's right there. Oh, it was on, yeah, it was up. Right there.
Thank you. Senate Bill 390. And again, the portion of the bill that I've heard concerns about from library personnel is really about the credentialing component, that that is, that is the source of credentialing for librarians in Georgia. Having worked with librarians for many years, I know they take their professional credentials very seriously. And their concern is that by removing that requirement, it diminishes the value of their specific credentials. And I may not be saying that very well, but, for example, it eliminates the requirement of a certified librarian to serve as library director. Librarians, and this has been, not only our librarians, but librarians across the state have expressed their concern about that as a, I guess, as a diminishment of their professional credentials.
And what prompted the bill?
I don't know, Commissioner. I'm sorry, I would have to go back and look at that.
So, but we're, we are opposing a bill, but you don't know why people would support the bill? You don't know the other side?
Commissioner, what I've said, I haven't said anything about opposing it. What I've said is that the board, that I have heard concerns from library staff, and I wanted you all to be aware of that.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, totally misunderstood. I think there is some concerns. Alabama and other states have decided to pull out of the American Library Association. And there are concerns that they are setting policies as far as, I can say, in our libraries. I had a lot of concerns the month of October when several libraries were celebrating banned book week. And they're mocking parents who are actually wanting pornographic material removed from just children. They weren't banning the books. They just didn't want to make them available to children. And so they were mocking those parents and setting up displays of Harry Potter was banned. You know, I'm sure there are probably someone somewhere that thinks Harry Potter is witchcraft and wanted it banned. But it was kind of mocking those efforts to pull pornographic material away from young children. So I think that is something that maybe we could address, address the concerns of those parents. And maybe it's something, even if we still participate in the American Libraries Association, that we do not participate in that element because it is a divisive policy decision. I mean, we have sites, websites, that are pornographic that our children aren't allowed to. So I think access to books that are pornographic shouldn't be made available to our young kids. But I think that might be, I'm not very familiar with the reading of the bill or anything like that.
We'd be glad to provide a copy of it to everyone. And like I said, the library staff had contacted me about the professional credential element, and I wanted you all to be aware of that.
And how much do we pay to, do we pay to belong to the American Library Association?
I will look into that and reach out to Ms. Holloman and see if I can get some additional information.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I knew you probably wouldn't know all the answers.
No, I think that's a good question. And I'll, we'll take that down and provide some additional information.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Corbett? Commissioner Barrett?
Hey, Commissioner.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure about the first part of SB 390, but eliminating the requirement for a certified librarian to serve as library director? I mean, that seems pretty crazy. Who are we going to get, the Ethics Board people to put on there?
I don't have a comment on that, Commissioner.
I mean, it just makes us, why would you remove the requirement for a certified librarian to serve as a library director? I don't know about the ALA part and that part, but it just seems crazy already. I mean, who are we going to put in there? Janitors, CFOs? Like, who else better to run a library than a librarian? A certified librarian at that?
Commissioner, based on the questions today, we will work with Ms. Holloman and her team and get some additional information for the board about this bill.
Thank you.
All right, other questions and comments? Vice Chair Abdur-Rahman?
Just a request. The information that you have for that particular bill, would you make sure to forward it to my office so I have it before the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Whatever you come up with.
Of course, we'll make sure the full board gets that.
Thank you.
All right, other questions and comments? 12:55, I'll entertain a motion for recess for lunch. Executive session, items of real estate litigation and personnel. Please vote.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Ready? All right, without objection, we will resume the regular order of business. Items from executive session. Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a motion to approve the request to engage outside counsel in the matter set forth in item number one of the executive session agenda?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please hold.
And the vote is open?
What's this for again?
Item number one. For engagement of outside counsel.
And the motion passes. Four yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item two of the executive session agenda?
Our motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes. Four yeas, zero nays.
Five.
Eight, ma'am.
Please.
Six with Commissioner Arrington and Vice Chair Khadija Abdul-Raqman.
And there are no further action items from executive session?
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the add-on item 24-01-02, request approval for procurement of supplies and equipment required for individuals housed in the county's jail facilities in an amount, total amount not to exceed $2,910,764 and $79,000.
Okay, so... Why is my screen like this? I'm in the mood. Okay. I did, no. So, Madam CFO? Would you explain what's before us here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a packaged procurement item for the acquisition of a number of different types of commodities for the use and support of the inmates at the Fulton County Jail to be funded out of the funds that we received from the Closed Inmate Welfare Fund. It includes items like uniforms, clothing, undergarments, hygiene, mops, brooms, and disinfectants. All of the items that are listed here on exhibit one have been through the procurement process, and if you would like details on the process that was employed, I'll have Ms. Strong Whitaker answer those questions. But these are all commodity-related items, all to be funded out of the inmate welfare fund.
All right, would you describe the items once again, please?
The list of items includes uniforms, clothing, undergarments, hygiene-related items, shoes, mattresses, blankets and towels, mops, brooms, disinfectants, cleaners, towel sheets, masks, trash bags, mop buckets, gloves, cleaning equipment, tumbler intake, disposable mask, program supplies for the inmates, toilet tissue, towels, washcloths and blankets, laundry detergent, cleaner, floor sealer, floor wax, trash bags. Inmate, you want me to continue? Inmate tumblers, nitro exam gloves, equipment, nasal Narcan for officers in the jail, large carry pouch kits, shank-free items, specific cleaning supplies for equipment, KN-95 masks, and some replacement television sets for the housing units.
Okay, I would submit to you, colleagues and the public, that all of the items that you just enumerated are the same items that the sheriff used the inmate welfare fund to pay for. And if we're going to continue purchasing those same items, we may as well give the money back to the sheriff and let him continue. Everything that you just cited, with probably one or two exceptions, are, in my humble opinion, items that we, the county, should be providing. For example, if an inmate needs a uniform, that should be our responsibility. Medical equipment, that should be our responsibility. Cleaning supplies, that should be our responsibility. Why should the inmate welfare fund be used to pay for items like that? So again, I won't go through everything that you've mentioned, but everything that you mentioned, once again, the same items that the sheriff used that, and this board voted almost unanimously to take that responsibility from him, transfer it to your department, and based upon what you're asking us to do today, we may as well give it back to him and let him, so I'm not going to be supporting any of this. I think that the welfare, inmate welfare fund should be used solely and exclusively for the personal benefit of the inmates. It's their money. The other stuff that you mentioned, these are ordinary items that we, as a county, should be providing for those who happen to end up in the Fulton County Jail. So Commissioner Barrett, Commissioner Ellis, and Commissioner Arrington.
Okay, just for clarity, when we passed the resolution in, I don't know, November? I'm not sure quite when it was. Madam County Attorney, when we passed the resolution regarding the inmate welfare fund several months ago, the results of that was that there is no longer any inmate welfare fund. It does not exist. It was abolished, correct?
That's correct.
Therefore, any rules that relate to what that money should be used for are also gone, correct?
Other than the general principle that it derives from the inmates and therefore, I believe it was the will of the board expressed at the time, that it would go for the benefit of the inmates as well.
But it was just a general premise. There's nothing specific, a list, there's no discussion about who should pay for it.
There's no specific rules around that. It just went into the general fund.
Well, that's not, hold it, that's not totally correct, Madam County Attorney, because back in December 4th, 2023, CFO sent a letter to us explaining what it was going to be used for, and at that time, I don't know who else responded to objecting to the list that she provided.
So...
But she indicated at that time, back in December, what she would be using, she, I mean, she's in charge of it now, sits in her department.
So my take, and this is really a conversation or question, set of statements and questions for you, Madam CFO, but my take on this is that the inmate welfare fund no longer exists. The rules around it no longer exist. These items, I mean, I sort of halfway agree with you, Mr. Chairman, in that these items are operational items for the jail. They're not maintenance items for the jail. And our side of the equation, the general fund, the county versus the sheriff, the county should be paying only for the maintenance and upkeep of the jail. So it seems to me that structurally, the way we manage this change, since the inmate welfare fund got abolished, is odd, in that we moved the money from the sheriff into a line item in our budget called inmate welfare fund, under non-agency. And it seems to me that that money should be considered revenue, which it must be in order to be able to also then spend it, but that if these, if the sheriff needs 2,000, or sorry, $2,910, et cetera, that that $2,910 should be put into his budget to buy these things, to operate the jail. So I'm just sort of a little confused of why we want to sort of take over $3 million worth of jail operations when we shouldn't be doing that. We should be just focused on the maintenance. So can anybody respond to that?
You're saying the same thing I'm saying.
But you're saying not to give it, I'm saying also give him the $2 million and let him buy the things.
Just give it back to him like it was. Oh, my gosh.
Well, no, no, I'm saying that the revenue from the inmates, from the commissary and phones and whatever else, comes into the general fund, and the amount of operating budget that the sheriff needs to operate goes to the sheriff. So if there's excess over the $2,900 and whatever dollars, it would go into the general fund. There is no more inmate welfare fund. We abolished it. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for that or against it, I'm just saying that's what we did. So, and the net, net is exactly what I just said, except it's just out of what line item it's coming from and who's, who's doing the paying.
Commissioner Barrett, the resolution that the board passed simply required that the funds, required the sheriff to remit the funds to the county and for them to be deposited. The memo that I prepared on the Fourth of December was prepared in an attempt to inform the board, one, that we had received the resources, and two, what our plan would be then to utilize those, those resources for the benefit of the inmates. To the chairman's comment about these particular types of expenses are things that should be in the sheriff's budget, they have not been in the sheriff's budget because they were being paid for routinely out of the inmate welfare fund, which was a separate account managed by the sheriff's office. This was in, this was an attempt to, one, comply with the board's resolution to deposit the funds in the general fund, and establish a means by which those funds could be used to continue to support the inmates, but outside of the sheriff's control, which is what it seemed the, the action was that the board was taking by pulling the inmate welfare fund back.
I mean, I guess I just see it as, there were, the reason that the inmate welfare fund was abolished is because there was some use of those funds for things that were other than what's on this list. And so that is resolved by taking the, the income over into the general fund. But I still think the operation, these operational items should be coming from his budget. So if we need to give him the $2 million to do it, then fine. I mean, that said, I'm, I'm comfortable approving this today because I assume we need these items and we need to get it done, but I think there should, we should be looking at that structure and getting that straight ongoing. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ellis?
There seems to be a gross misremembering of how we got here. Okay? We had a standalone fund. It was being misused. It was documented that there were purchases that were made within here, or funds that were expended within here. They were clearly without, outside of the intent of what this fund was there for. So we moved the funds, rather than being a separate standalone fund administered that way, we moved the funds back in expressly to be managed through non-agency because we wanted this transparency. We wanted some cl... We wanted some clear, some clarity around these were legitimate purchases for express purposes. Our CFO came up with a memo describing how it would be, how we would apply them, what types of things would qualify. It was very well laid out. There were no objections to it. She's bringing them forth today. And if you look at the way that other counties utilize these types of funds, these are well within kind of what they use it for. Capital, these types of things, right? And there's no reason whatsoever to suggest, all of a sudden, that we should move a fund that was being mismanaged under one entity, back, those funds back under that entity to potentially be mismanaged and no transparency into them again. So I do think that what you've laid out was clearly the intent and expression of what the board desired. And this is a good follow-through. And I, and I would argue that expressly for these types of items, which you have noted here. Hard, commodity-related items, TVs, those sorts of things, which may not necessarily be necessities that, that, you know, should or should not be within the confines of a jail. And they are things that, if you look at sort of the things which we thought were being utilized for, they were in line with that. And historical stuff that we had seen from prior sheriff administrations when we didn't see an issue with this particular process. So I fully support and I'm going to second this.
Just one correction, Commissioner Ellis. There was at least one objection to the memo that was sent out by the CFO back in December. And each of you should have received a copy of it back in December and recently.
The majority of the board did not object to it, though.
Right, I understand. So, but this takes us back to where we were. So I mean, which is fine if that's what we were.
I mean, it provide, I mean, this, this provides transparency. This is what this whole thing was about. And now they say, oh, let's just dump it back over there and let's just go back to the way it was and invite the same kind of, that is basically what you said. Let's just take it back over in their budget and let them just kind of do whatever the heck they want to with it.
I'm, I'm next in the queue. I can't wait to talk on this. You done? Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Arrington?
This is the craziest thing I have ever heard in my entire life. We took the money from the sheriff, gave it to the CFO. We didn't like what the sheriff was doing with the money, so we gave it to the CFO. Now the CFO has brought back her recommendations of what she wants to do with the money. And he says he don't, this is just like giving it back to the sheriff? You don't want to give any of the money away. You don't want to spend any money on the inmates, do you, Mr. Chair? You're saying that this, we gave it to the sheriff, the sheriff couldn't use the money. Now we gave it to the CFO. Now you don't even trust her with the money? You don't even trust her recommendations to do with the money? You don't want the inmates to have toilet paper? What in the world is going on? You don't want to give it to the sheriff to manage? Now you don't want to give it to the CFO to manage? Who do you want to manage the money? Who do you want to manage it? You took it from the sheriff. Now the CFO has come back and made reasonable recommendations, and you don't even want to approve those? You don't want them to have shoes? You don't want them to have masks? You don't want the place to be clean? You don't think they need mops and brooms? You don't think that's for the, the welfare of the inmates? What are you talking about? This is insanity. Have you lost your mind? Oh, this is giving it back to the sheriff? Well, let's just give it back to the sheriff then. Someone has to have the money. Someone has to decide how it's going to be used. The lady said this has been through all of procurement. What else do you want? What else do you want? Who else do you want to manage the money? Who else do you want to decide how it's going to be used and whether it's actually for the welfare of the inmates or not? Obviously, you don't want the sheriff to do it. Now you don't want the CFO to do it. I guess you don't want procurement to do it because they, they procured all of this. Who do you want to do it, Mr. Chair? Who do you want to be responsible for making sure that they have toilet paper? This is insanity. What in the world is going on? Oh, I don't want the sheriff to, you just don't, let's just, let's just release all the inmates. Call the sheriff, tell him to release all the inmates because they can't have no toilet paper. Inmates can't have no toilet paper, so we just go release them all? This is insane. I voted against taking it from the sheriff the first time. Okay, that's fine. I, I lost. You said give it to the CFO. Now you don't even want to follow her recommendation? Let's call one of the janitors and see what they recommend. Whose recommendation are you going to follow, Mr. Chair? You're the one that took the money from the sheriff and gave it to the CFO? And you're not going to follow her recommendation? Or the procurement officer's recommendation? Whose, whose recommendation are you going to follow then? You were, you were on the inmate welfare committee. You, Mr. Chair, you were on that committee. This is insanity. How in the world are you going to say, take the money from one person when you were on the committee that was supposed to be responsible for making sure that the money was not misused? Then you say, give it to another person, our chief financial officer. She comes back with a long line of recommendation of items that she believes are appropriate. And you say, oh, well, just give it back to the sheriff. What? What are you talking about? Are you okay? That is insane. That is complete insanity. When I finish. And I ain't finished yet. Shit. Trash bags. They can't have no trash bags. They can't have no toilet paper. They can't have uniforms. They can't have undergarments. They can't have hygiene items. This is the most craziest thing I've ever seen or heard of in my life.
Okay, seems like we have a philosophical difference here, a lack of understanding. I'm not addressing the management of the funds. I'm using, I'm addressing what the funds are used for. I believe that it's Fulton County government's responsibility, to use your example, to buy toilet paper for the inmates. Not, just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. We'll get into that in a moment. I think it is the responsibility of Fulton County government to provide toilet paper and uniforms and toothbrushes and toothpaste, things of that nature, for the inmates and not using the inmate welfare fund for those purposes. That's the philosophical difference. I can't make that any simpler than that is. Vice Chair, you have the floor.
Let me go on record saying that I will not sit here and watch a commissioner disrespect a man old enough to be all, the majority of us elder. You can get your point across, you can say what you need to do, and you can be as passionate as you like. But I think it is horrible to be disrespectful because you can. Can we not get personal, be disrespectful, and have a conversation and disagree? This is sickening behavior to talk to the chairman of Fulton County Commission in that manner, and no one says anything. Whether I agree or disagree with you, I am not going to disrespect you because I can. Now, my question is simply this. I have asked this question over and over and over again and have not gotten an answer. There were things that were paid for that the sheriff said was a mistake and should not have been paid for. So if it was a mistake, will that money be put back? Or was that something just said to me and the camera at the time? I'm going to continue to ask that question. I will support this. I don't have a problem supporting it. But what I have a problem every time, there is something that comes in front of me that requires my vote for money to be spent. And I have yet to get a answer from our sheriff's office about the items that he said were mistakenly paid for by that fund. Now, if he has no intentions of putting that money back, say that. And I will not ask, ask the question again. I need an answer to my question. What was said to me, there were some things that were accidentally paid for out of that fund. So if they were paid for accidentally, that gives me the impression that there is money somewhere else that, that should have been used for. So this is question nine, 10, 11, or 12 that I've asked every time it is brought before this body for a vote with the sheriff that requires funding. I'm not going to let inmates or anyone else suffer because someone does not want to be accountable. However, I will continue to ask this question, even if I am the only one that is asking it, and I want an answer.
Commissioner Thorne?
Okay, I'm, the inmate welfare fund, do we know relatively how much revenue we get from it? Can we predict, can we accurately predict how much we get year after year?
In reviewing the financial statements, the two years that I looked at, one was like four, a little over $4 million, one was six. So we've averaged about five. We included in the 2024 budget the $5 million that was paid over, five-plus million that was paid over last year, plus another anticipation of revenue to be received during the course of 2024 of about $5 million. So roughly, we expect on an annual basis, $5 million from the, the commissions on inmate commissary and phone usage and, and things like that.
So of the $5 million, we have a request here for 2.9, basically $3 million of whatever would be brought in right now. So since it's, we can't necessarily count on it, like Commissioner Pitts said, it seems like a $1.77 million expense for uniforms, clothing, undergarments, hygiene, shoes, mattress, blankets and towels. It seems like that's something we have to have, and that should be a line item in the sheriff's budget. So why is it not a line item required? Because we can't effectively watch and do our job in the jail if they don't have things like that.
Commissioner Thorne, as long as I have been with the county, the inmate welfare fund has been used to cover these types of expenses. Maybe not at this dollar amount, but the inmate welfare fund has been used, you know, for, for this purpose. So there hasn't been an appropriation in the sheriff's budget of that magnitude for these type of expenses for the inmates.
Okay. And then it says that there's a 10% contingency. Is that because we don't know the exact figures?
That's to allow for changes in inmate populations among the different, particularly among the different commodity types for items that would be issued directly to an inmate, like the, the uniforms and, and those kind of costs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, the motion on the floor is to approve. Cast your vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yeas, one nay.
Next item.
No further item.
What? No further items to come before us today? We are, I'm sorry, just a minute. There is, Madam Clerk?
It sure is. I'm sorry.
Are you, Madam Clerk, are you okay?
No.
Mr. Manager?
240088, discussion, county manager update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I want to take this opportunity to provide an update on the ongoing cybersecurity incident affecting many of our systems. We'll be as transparent as possible with our citizens and obviously with you, but this is an ongoing investigation and remains in the early stages. So there are certain details that we're unable to share at this time. As you already know, we detected suspicious activity on our network around 12 days ago. We immediately contacted law enforcement and engaged leading cybersecurity experts to assist in this investigation. Since that time, our teams have been working around the clock to understand the nature and scope of the incident and safely work to restore services for our citizens. Throughout the restoration process and response to this incident, we are prioritizing public safety and augmenting essential services with workarounds so that we can continue to support Fulton County residents. While a number of our key systems have been affected by this outage, it's important to note that we have no reason to believe that this incident related to the election process or other current events. In abundance of caution, Fulton County and the Secretary of State's respective technology systems were isolated from one another as a part of the response efforts. And we are now working to securely reconnect those systems. I can share that we do have election workers who are back online as we prepare for next month's primary elections. Some of the systems that have been particularly impacted include our court system, our tax system, and our financial systems. I call those the big three, plus telephonic access. And while I'm proud of the work of our team and everything that they've done to restore services, I need to be clear, this outage is still in the early stages and has affected thousands of residents. Services ranging from property tax payments to title searches to vendor registrations, to boards of equalization hearings, to water billing and court proceedings have been affected in one way or the other and many others that I won't name here. This underscores the critical nature of the work that we do as a local government and also the work that lies ahead of us in this recovery. Our IT team has made significant progress in bringing services back. And we're working diligently to, again, safely and securely restore the rest of our systems. I want to thank Kevin Carrigan, our CIO, for his leadership and tenacity under tremendous pressure during this incident response. I also want to share a bit of progress that we've made. All of our public facilities are open and serving constituents. Approximately 450 phone lines are now operational and have been restored with their previous numbers. We're continuing to add additional lines. We have prioritized lines for critical services and those that typically have the highest volume. We've also worked with departments to identify and publish email addresses for public access while we work to restore phone service. And we'll continue the updates that we provide vis-à-vis our website. The Board of Assessors have now resumed homestead exemption applications. Last week, the Tax Commissioner was able to restore motor vehicle registration services and renewals. Our Board of Equalization has now resumed their hearing. So kudos to Dr. Ferdinand and Shay Alexander for, for their leadership and efforts. Our Justice Partners have faced a particular set of challenges with the court system down. Our Justice Leaders have had many of their people on the ground working to provide workarounds and keep cases proceeding and the jail population managed. I won't be able to probably note all of their efforts, but I do want to acknowledge their hard work and the partnership, especially Judge Glanville, McBurney, Taylor, Kirk, Shay Alexander again, DA Willis, Solicitor Gammage, PD Kenner, Sheriff Labott, and Marshall McKee. They've just been tremendously committed and accessible during this, during this event. One example of that is they've worked together to ensure that first appearance hearings have continued as required. And I'm also glad to report that there is no increase in the jail population, which is a huge indicator of the hard work and collaboration and, again, specific. And again, specific kudos to Sheriff Labott and his team, some, some of which were here today. Later this week, we will uphold one of our most important commitments, which is the processing of the employee payroll. I want to thank Kimo Shakoa, Ken Herman, and Sharon Whitmore and many others who have worked tirelessly to ensure that we were able to meet that payroll on time. And again, we'll continue to provide updates as we bring other services back. As we did during COVID-19, we have engaged our emergency management team to lead our efforts and coordinate the response across all affected departments. I want to thank Joe Bearaswayne for his leadership as IMA Director in bringing together resource requirements, engaging our partners both internally and externally, and, and working many long hours and hosting our 10:00 AM and, and 4:00 PM meetings every day that, where we assess where we are and communicate internally. A great deal of work has gone into this response so far. But again, as I said, it's really the beginning. We do not have an estimated timeframe when our systems will be back online. But as you can hear, we either have workarounds or are making progress. We know the public has questions about this incident. Of course, we've done two press conferences. It's our intention to be as transparent as possible with residents, but given the active investigation, we're somewhat limited. We're still working with law enforcement and outside experts to understand exactly what happened and to strengthen the security of our systems going forward. Because of that, there are limitations on, on what we can share. I do want to though, say two or three last things. Thank all the residents of Fulton County for their patience and support and many of our governmental partners for their understanding. I also want to thank our employees. They're never better than when faced with a challenge like this for their resilience and commitment to serving residents in spite of any obstacles that have come up. And while this is a challenging, difficult process and not one of our own making, I'm confident that we'll emerge with an information systems infrastructure more secure and resilient than before. And then finally, of course, I want to thank you for your leadership, your involvement, your encouragement and support. It's critical and very much appreciated. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other items that come before us, Madam Clerk? Last question of the day. Are you okay? I am. We are, gentlemen.